Good morning, everyone. I want to thank everybody for being here this morning. Beautiful day, I guess the wind's supposed to come this afternoon, but it will take what we got. We've got sunshine and moisture on the way, so we'll be happy for that. So I officially call this meeting order with my thanks for everyone that's here today. Clerk Colwell.
Chairman Benbrook.
President.
Vice Chair Baker.
President.
Commissioner Blakenham.
President.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
President.
Okay, Commissioner O'Donnell was sick, he's at the doctor, he'll join us later, hopefully. Everyone, please stand, and I'd like to welcome Mr. Kevin Miller from New Beginnings. He's going to give us some positive spiritual thought here to start our meeting off on the right foot. Lot of pressure for him, I think. Alright, thank you for being here with us this morning.
Thank you for inviting me. So, God, I'd like to first thank you for this beautiful day that you created for us. Thank you for the ability to come together and be involved with our community, and help make decisions to make Taos a better place to live for families. I thank you for our accounting commissioners, that they give up their time and their energy and their passion about what they're doing, so thank you for their involvement. Just pray right now for Taos, that it becomes a safer place, a better place for us to raise our families, and to be involved. And as we start making decisions, I just pray that there's wisdom and guidance from you guys. So in all these things, we pray that you're present and...
Thank you. Sheriff Hook, please lead us in the flip.
The honor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Commissioners, any... We need to speak on behalf of the community. Seeing that, can we continue on? Next item is the rule of the agenda, Commissioners. The Board of Commissioners. I have a motion. And did I hear Commissioner, did I go second? Yes, yeah, I thought I did. And, uh, so, Clerk Colwell.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenham.
Yes.
Vice Chair Baker.
Yes.
Chairman Benbrook.
Yes. Uh, next item is item five, awards and recognition. Item I is a proclamation to be presented to Taos County Public Safety and First Responders. Uh, Nisa, Jornel, sorry, BD. I'll read this proclamation, on behalf of the Commissioners. This is a proclamation honoring our public safety and first responders. Whereas Taos County Public Safety and First Responders work every day to help the residents of Taos County and our visitors enjoy the routines of their daily lives in a safe environment. And whereas Taos County employs a professional staff of dispatch, emergency medical services, fire, Office of Emergency Management, detention, and Sheriff's Department, without them it would be impossible to attain the foremost goals and achievements that make Taos County a safe place. And whereas, the Taos County Board of Commissioners recognize the sacrifice of these brave men and women and our public safety departments and first responders who demonstrate their unmatched selflessness and their service in the utmost stressful situations. And whereas, the members of our emergency services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. And whereas, the members of our public safety departments and first responders, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas, Taos County's E-911 Dispatch, Emergency Services, Emergency Medical Services, Fire, Office of the Emergency Management, Detention, and Sheriff's Department have never refused their county's call, so the citizens of Taos County wish to express lasting gratitude to these special men and women of our community. Let us show our appreciation by honoring our public safety and first responders by giving them extraordinary gratitude that they rightly deserve. Therefore, be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissions of Taos County in New Mexico, that on the month of May 2017 shall be designated and set aside as Public Safety and First Responders Month for Taos County. I need someone to present you with a plaque, and she's telling me to get down there so we can get a picture with you. Tell me if I need to raise my chin to get the chiseled look, or if I'm a double chinny, okay? Can you? Uh, the owner that's not up here is Mikey Corvall, the fire chief, and he had a death in the family in his unable. So Bobby, if you know, got set on the island. Mikey? Hi, what's up?
Sir. Great, sir.
Almost, almost right. The only edge in the park is not the citizen, you don't get that, so if you can get it, uh, there you go, upstairs, you down? Come on here, play a case for him. Bobby, I'll take mine. What's your... You can come back here, so many, I'm trying to get that close, bro. Look at the, I don't know, look at the mic, bro.
No, no, maybe that's why it's not working.
I'm not going to have a microphone here, this one. Make sure everybody's quiet.
Two, three.
I need a copybook, I don't even notice. There are issues.
Two.
I agree. That's your right now. It's been a work alongside each and every one of them for many years, and I know we've got some of the best people, and I personally thank you for everything you do. Um, Taos County's fortunate to have some really great employees throughout, and, uh, we honor them as well. Anything, Commissioners? Okay, moving on to item B, recognition of Eliza Espinoza, a newly graduated dispatcher in the New Mexico Department of Public Safety, Telecommunicators Class Number 135. This will be presented by her supervisor, Mr. Dominic Martinez, our E-911 Director. Dom?
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, Mr. Corvall, Mrs. Baker. I wanted to recognize Eliza Espinoza today. Uh, first of all, thank you for the proclamation, Commissioners, that was, that's great to see that, uh, our Board of Commissioners is seeing what's going on out there, because in my 25 years of being a public safety official, I've seen things over the last couple of years get worse and worse as far as, uh, crime and, uh, emergency situations are happening. But yes, you're right, uh, Mr. Chairman, you have a great, um, team of public safety officials here in Taos County that work hard to save people's lives. Um, but yes, I do want to recognize Eliza Espinoza, she graduated from the academy, her class was number 135, she graduated a couple of Fridays ago. Um, and we're proud of her, I'm proud of her. Uh, I've been bringing a few people that have even been sending and graduating and getting certified, so we want to recognize Eliza, she's born and raised here in Taos, been here all her life, and just wanted to recognize her today in front of you all. Thank you.
Thank you. She wants to say something here, she'll talk on the radio. I hear her on the radio, she wants to say something here. Alright, thank you. Okay, next item is item 6A, which is Citizens Concerned. We welcome anyone from the public that's with our audience here today to address a commission. Uh, this is not something that we can take action on or, and, uh, minimal comment on, however we ask you to come up and keep your presentation to five minutes or less. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to talk to the commission here today?
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Chairman, first good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah, thanks for having us. So I'm Jennifer Goodfeller, the new EDO at Straight Parts, and this is Barbara Ann Downs Van Kelsey.
Hey, Ryan.
She's the new president of the board starting in June.
June.
Um, so I wanted to share with you guys some stats that we have currently at the shelter. A lot of good news going on. So in August of this year, the shelter housed 115 dogs, which is 31 over capacity, so obviously too many, and 80 cats, which is 30 over ideal. We have averaged 72 dogs and 20 cats since October, so our numbers are going down, which is good things. Uh, obviously, right now we're right in the height of kitten and puppy season, so those numbers are going to go up, um, but those are all fast-track animals that we can get out pretty quickly, um, so that won't hurt us too badly. In August of 2016, our average length of stay for our animals was 62.2 days, uh, which is a very long time to be in a shelter. So from September 2016 to March 2017, the average length of stay was 31 days, going down, good news. And even more exciting, in December 2016, um, through today, our average length of stay is just 17 days. Um, our goal is to get that down to about 14 days, which is about two weeks, which is about average for shelter animals. Our current live release rate is 94%, um, so 94% of the animals that walk into the shelter walk back out the front door alive. Uh, most of those are not released in Asia, they're from, you know, hit by car, or animals that come in too sick to be rehabilitated. Uh, September through March, our adoptions were 572 animals. Transfers to other counties, um, and city shelters that have a need for animals, they have more homes looking for animals than we do here. We have the opposite problem here in Taos, we have too many animals coming in and not enough homes looking for those animals. We transferred them out in order to save them, and that was 391 animals. And we had 127 returned owners. And the best news of all, I think, is that every animal in the shelter has been spayed or neutered, and we're going to keep up on that and make sure that nobody gets out of the shelter until they, they're altered. So, I think that's probably the best news that we have to share with you guys.
Alright. Sounds very positive, we thank you for everything you guys do.
Absolutely.
Chairman, Mr. Corvall, of course we want to welcome Jennifer, the new board chair, but I also want to thank your predecessor, Diane, and Pam, for all the hard work they've done over the last year. This is a whole different organization when we were dealing with the heroism, so welcome, and we're grateful that you're here to continue that.
Yes, absolutely, thank you, yes, thank you.
Commissioner Blakenham. Thank you, yeah, I just want to reiterate those thanks, it's really been a big turnaround, we appreciate it. Uh, the Spain New Week's going to make a big difference in the long run. Just urge you to work with our staff so that you can sell our licenses.
Absolutely.
Anything else you'd like to say? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is item seven, presentations. Uh, this will be a presentation from Taos High School, how do you affect others? Myself and Mr. Corvall were briefed by three of them, um, this last Thursday, and this was a pretty exciting thing. I'd like to take a second, I know he's not here for this, but with him is Daniel Aguilar. Um, he wasn't here at our meeting the other day, but he was pitching in the state tournament game that Taos went to, he's made it to state, uh, most of his years. I've seen this kid grow up from Little League, and he's a lot of fun to watch play baseball. Daniel, thank you for what you've done representing our community so much, I really appreciate it. Hi, introduce yourselves for the record.
Uh, I'm Serena Chavich, I'm from Atlanta, New York.
I'm Andrew.
Um, we had our presentation on a Android?
Their name's on the slide.
It's not that one? Oh, um, I don't know.
Yes, I think that's it.
Yeah. Uh, so, we call ourselves the Word. Uh, and we started this project at the beginning of the year, and we'll leave you over here. Okay, while she changes, I'll just give you guys a quick overview of our project. Um, so this is research statistic class in the high school that's run by Mr. Brown, and he has us pick a project, and he lets out whatever, and we just research it. Um, so in the beginning of the 2017, 2015, 2017 school year, there was a lot of suicides, and mostly between teens, and, um, this greatly affected all of us. And we just really wanted to know what was going on with our youth. So within this research statistic class, we created a survey to go and present to our youth and all this, and we just wanted to talk about our survey.
So, survey? Yes. So the survey consisted of five parts, and, um, so after we did the survey, you know, we didn't really know what we were doing going into it. So, um, as we did the survey, we're learning things about, you know, people, and so we kind of, we struggled with the same things that, you know, schools, 400 to 500 companies are struggling with, that's like getting clear, concise, and accurate data when you're dealing with, um, something as, you know, random as people. So we were kind of going through and figured, um, you know, what questions can, um, you know, can help us the best, and so that was part of our fourth section, right?
Last section.
Fourth section. Yes, on the fourth section, there were pretty much yes or no questions asking about, you know, how people feel. And, um, so these are the questions we took and we kind of looked deeper at. And so from there, you know, we did a development of things like confidence intervals, we did hypothesis testing, and, um, so after doing this, we kind of came to the conclusion that, well, we didn't give enough surveys and just started shrinking our margin of error. We definitely had to give out, um, I think we gave out something like 250 surveys, then we had to be somewhere up in, to 2,000, to try to start shrinking our margin of error.
Just to clarify, our survey consists of five parts. The first part is asking, have you ever been bullied, and there's different types of bullying, like cyberbullying and whatnot. And then the second part is the same question, but if you have ever done it to someone else. While the third part talks about, um, if you ever considered or attempted self-harm and suicide, while the fourth part asks if you feel comfortable with your peers, teachers, parents, and the fifth part is just the rest. So if you can cover the first piece of slides. Um, so what we observed during our surveys were that the graders didn't really understand what we're asking on the survey, they didn't understand what self-harm was, and they didn't understand, um, why is this such a problem? They were, I think they were still too immature to understand, um, what these things are, and they had more of their genias, like if I fell, I'd come myself, that's all. Um, I think we're just going to do it without the rest, because we're having difficulty. I hope we got it.
This is a bug we have in our system every Tuesday for some reason.
Oh, every Tuesday? Well, again, this experience didn't, I didn't start to understand a little more, but they, uh, still weren't sure about it, and they're kind of joking about it instead. And, uh, what we saw during our surveys and from our data is that the bullying is, um, seeing a lot more in middle school than it is in high school. And, um, obviously, we need to take, administer more surveys to understand why this is, and if this is accurate. This right now is just kind of what we're seeing a pattern in. Anyway, um, so with our survey, that gave us that, a lot of the sixth graders were kind of laughing about it, and we did see that up through, um, we did it from fifth grade to 12th grade, and we did see that up through grade. Um, bullying and suicide is a very hard topic to talk about. And within middle school especially, they don't want to talk about it, and we believe, uh, we have no evidence for this, but we believe that it's because within our culture we're kind of taught not to talk about our problems, we're taught to just suck it up and move on. And, um, we can see this through our school base and our surveys. So our main goal is to basically spread awareness throughout the whole community to make sure people know what's going on in teens' lives. We're trying to take, we took the data back to all the teachers that we surveyed, we took it back to the classrooms, just so the students could really know, like, what, that we were actually looking at their data. And that we analyzed it and just kind of showed them that, basically, they're not alone. There's other people that are dealing with the same thing. Um, we also came up with a panel that we are, um... We want to let people know also the, the warning signs of suicide and depression, so that if they do see someone that has those signs, that they can help them. Um, we also want to let teens know that they can talk to someone. We kind of want to make, like, a program or something where they can talk to us, they can, we've worked to see someone say something, or, and there's hot things, and we just kind of want to be a part of that to help make it easier for them to talk about. And the Cease Say app just came out last week, which is their teen prevention, uh, app, teen suicide prevention, and, uh, it's on Apple, um, but it's a little bit much, like Google. So, my name is Nick, have a lot of collaborations within our community. Um, see something, say something, it's on our daily show, it's been on our radio show for a few times. Um, we also have been working with Rocky Mountain Youth Corps, and PINE, and, um, help us, uh, help us outreach Taos. And, um, so right now, after all of our data, we just really are brainstorming on what we can do. So when we sat down with you, with Mr. Benbrook and Mr. Corvall, we talked about some ideas in maybe educating the EMTs in mental health and, um, understanding how to work in these situations, if they find themselves, um, with a patient who is suicidal or has, uh, was attempted, so they can help them, and they know how to properly address them. And, uh, we also talked about maybe, um, also educating the police force and the firefighters. And then we, uh, we're also talking about putting together Teen Co-op Cafe right now, uh, which is, we're working with HOP to do, and, uh, we have a meeting this Friday with Mr. Luis Reyes at the press lecture for a potential building that we use. And we also started working with, this dagger's name?
Uh, Jackie Jagger's. Uh, no, Jackie Jagger's mom, which is, would be Debbie Friday.
Yeah, we've been working with her now as well, um, to...
And she was receptive, perfect. Do you want to go in a little bit more, Haley, on what that cafe's about, or whichever, sorry?
Uh, that cafe, our plan with the cafe is to have a safe place for teenagers to go, and a place that's completely manned by teenagers, and, um, that is a little more interesting for teenagers, that they actually want to get out of that. We understand that we do have the family center now, but it's, uh, a little more for the younger kids because of the center, or, sorry, because of the swimming pools. And, um, a lot of teenagers, it's kind of, um, looking at different things now. And so we're trying to put a cafe together that would be a fun spot for teenagers to go, and we have different activities going on that would, um, interest them. And we're looking at doing it almost 24 hours a day, so that they're basically someone to always go to. And, um, our, I, our goal with this cafe is just to put together a safe spot that they can always go to if they're having a hard time at home and they need to get away, so they have a place to go to, they're not stuck there. And Jill Klein is in charge of this room, and, um, she's really been pushing on this. And, um, Mrs. Friday has a place that she's willing to donate, potentially, and, um, we're also looking at using old children's clothing for this. And we also just had a grant meeting with somebody, uh, with United Ways, for $30,000 grant that would help us build that thing, and, um, so this is, yeah.
See, Commissioners, I'll have a hard copy available for you guys with all of this data and the presentation afterwards.
The data is, we must showing what our results were from our survey, and, uh, we broke it up into parts, so you can look at part one, part two, part three, and part four. In this slide that's up right now, it's, uh, part one and part two, and it's showing the, um, have you ever been bullied, or have you, uh, part one is have you ever been bullied, cyberbullied, uh, or physically abused, or verbally abused, and then the part two is have you ever done it to others? And you can see in the data that it's a little more in transition years, which should be sixth grade and ninth grade, and, um, it's pretty consistent otherwise.
I don't know, that's what she said, just to pick it back up from what she said. Every time we, um, she's doing the way through a transition year, you know, that transition from fifth grade to sixth grade, um, that transition from eighth grade to ninth grade, you see these spikes in the survey. And then they kind of, um, on most questions, they tend to go down, and as you know, the students are getting older, and it becomes more acumen as you're going to be looking. Okay, sorry, um, these are our confidence intervals, you know, as I just started testing, you know, and how we, um, from these confidence intervals is how we determine if we need to administer more surveys to start shrinking that margin of error.
Um, in that second graph, the orange one, um, it's showing what our results were over the survey, and we scored the survey, each part, um, there were five points for each question, and, uh, the highest score you could get was 52, and you can see, uh, the amount of surveys that actually scored in each specific area, and you can see that it gets, that there's maybe, I want to say there's only one, uh, higher than 48 in our survey, and, um, which is a good thing. Just to clarify about our scoring, um, so each question you can answer never all the way up to like constantly, and there's five, um, questions, and so never zero points, and constantly five points. And so the more points you have, the more, um, this happens, see, the more bullying that the student is getting. And this is just, um, a national and New Mexico level from the CDC survey in 2015, uh, which happens every two years, and it's showing where Mexico stands next to the national levels. And, uh, Mexico actually is a new data channel, and we're actually in the Suicide Belt of America, meaning that we're having the highest suicide rates in the country. And, um, here you don't really see it because we're a little bit lower, but, um, we're actually really high, and Taos itself is, um, fifth in the state with 31.8 suicides per 100,000. And, uh, the first state is, has, the county has a population of 3,000 citizens, so it's actually kind of different, they have 71.8, 71.2 suicides per 100,000. So of course, there's some error there, being that they only have 3,000 people in their county, but, um, we're really high in the suicide rates of America and our states. Not just Taos County, but New Mexico as a whole is in the top five states for suicide. And then just, you know, just as a conclusion, um, what we can infer from our data is our transition years are a lot harder for some of the students, and they find themselves feeling a little more bullied or affected in those years, and, um... We need to get the students talking and feel comfortable about talking about suicide and bullying, so when it progress that they do come to the point where they are feeling these, and thinking these thoughts of suicide and self-harm, they can go to a trusted individual and tell them about it, so we can potentially help them. And, um, to do that, we really just need to start getting this topic more talked about within our community, and do that, we really spread over.
Tell us the number of hours that you guys have spent, and how you equated it out to a dollar amount. This, this will blow you away.
Yeah, so Serena and I, uh, we've been working a lot with HOP, and, uh, we've been working with that Co-op Cafe, initially brainstorming on, um, how to, how we go about this and how we change this. And, uh, of course, we have to take the hours for whatever we need. And with minimum wage, I think it was, um, with us being paid minimum wage and not volunteering our time, we would have already had spent more than $30,000 worth of, um, costs in... Just in volunteer hours. Just in volunteer hours. So we would be making money for the cost. And this is just for September, yeah.
The majority of them are seniors, but they've already got a next layer that's going to continue this program.
Actually, the only senior is Daniel, who are our juniors, and we're going to continue the budget.
But our little sister, we're going to make her...
We're going to make her continue it now.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Commissioner O'Donnell, at the end, is, is represented from the Bridge Safety Network, and she's been real active in working with the DOT and stuff, so she at some point may want to sit down and talk with you guys as well, I think that would be beneficial to her and what she's doing on the, on the Bridge Safety Network. Anything, Commissioners, Vice Chair Baker?
I just, I'm just, um, proud that you guys have taken the steps forward to see those problems that you, that you've had with your, your schoolmates and wanting to find a way to assist them. Because there's some kids that just have a lot more than just school or bullying and play, things that are going on at home. And, um, you know, it's, uh, it's good. I'd call it getting to a motion, but it's, I'm proud of you guys and I, and I think it's something that we need as, as adults to support you as many as we can.
We've secured them some contacts through various partners that we have to help them for, um, any advice. I think it will be, uh, maybe we'll have to talk to some of those. So, um, anything we can do to help these guys, this is, this is a program that we need to support. Anything else, Commissioners? Guys, thank you very much for your time. And good luck to you in whatever you do. Thanks for representing our community the way you have. Okay. Okay, moving on, on the agenda, I have a seven B presentation from Wumaniti, uh, Earth Native Sanctuary on Natural Benefits of Hemp.
Yes, thank you.
I know we have a proud school board member with seeing what his students are achieving at a very high level. Thank you.
Just people, please, huh? The amount of the NPOs that are creating, so...
Well, actually, hemp can help a lot too with helping balance some children's brains and, because there's a lot going on in the world and the earth right now. So the children are being really affected by it as we know. And, uh, it's pretty amazing you guys have that crew of kids here. That's awesome speaking up and that's awesome, great. Yay! Thanks for having me here. I also have like a pile of like all kinds of cool stuff made out of hemp that should be made here. I think about stuff, yeah. All right, again, hi, my name is Gemma, also known as Kristen D. Ferdinando, and I've been in Taus for about 16 years. And for the last four years, I've been, um, creating my nonprofit, which is a 501(c)(3) that we incorporated in January of 2014 here in the state of New Mexico called Wumaniti Earth Native Sanctuary. Um, we do a lot with hemp fundraising communities in which then those monies, um, go towards our free youth and family outlets where youth and family can hang out together and be themselves where there's no alcohol, no drugs, no violence, um, around. So who's Wumaniti though? Wumaniti Earth Native Sanctuary is a sincere charity organization open to all people who are making the effort of living peacefully on earth. Wumaniti is a culmination of indigenous earth-based practices, many which are based on sacramental use of hemp and incorporates their various traditional ceremonies, beliefs, practices, and sacraments. And I also apologize, Elliot, you know, slept him for Taus Pueblo, was going to jump in today, but, um, we just recently got, uh, passed for Whole Foods with our hemp pure energy bar, so they're in the kitchen at the Taus County Economic Development Center today. Next slide, please. Oh, please, that's right, I'm sorry. Oh, that's great, okay. Grow hemp now, okay. So our purpose is, the primary purpose of our presentation is to discuss, uh, the benefits of growing hemp and how the growing of this crop can assist in making Taus more prosperous and sustainable through the use of hemp as a renewable energy. Wumaniti is ready to administer and monitor certified farmers to grow. Uh, this is something normally a state agricultural program would write, but our organization wrote it, uh, Exercising Religious Freedom Restoration Act. Uh, Wumaniti is also striving to build partnerships with local universities to further expand research and development hemp fields in New Mexico. Benefits of Hemp in Taus. Zed Paz is actually a friend of mine who's a Boulder. He is founder of the National Hemp Association and is executive director. He said hemp is currently a $620 million industry in the U.S. Currently, um, hemp can create tens of thousands of American jobs. The businesses can grow, process, and source their hemp in the U.S. Hemp is a track, uh, benefits of hemp in Taus. More benefits. Hemp is attractive to people willing to vote with their dollars and buy products that reflect their values. Hemp can be a key to creating a green future and sustainable value-added industries in our neighborhoods, cities, states, and country. Hemp can help farmers looking to diversify their farm operations. Hemp fits well into increasing popular organic, low-impact, and sustainable methods of agriculture. Agriculture. Farming benefits of hemp. Industrial hemp doesn't require herbicides. Because hemp is such a fast-growing plant, it provides a canopy, a canopy within five to six weeks that most weeds cannot, uh, penetrate, meaning less cost for you. And it also gets prairie dogs out because it grows tall and the prairie dog can't see when they leave. There are fewer biological pests, um, to industrial hemp, uh, so you don't have to spend a fortune in pesticides. Uh, hemp can be used to restore depleted soils. Studies have shown that hemp can be used as a mob crop on soils that have been heavily damaged by chemical use. Hemp is also easy to grow as it is strong and a hardy plant, so that means less stress for you. You don't need special machinery to harvest hemp. It is nice to have a column wire, but, um, we've been doing it all by hand the last two years. Um, a simple brush cutter is enough for some crops. It means that as a farmer, you probably already have easy access to a harvester. Hemp building material. Uh, benefits of hemp in building communities and building construction. Um, hemp can replace synthetic controlling base and other high embodied energy materials to produce a high-performance products that are better for the environment, better for your health and your wallet. We're, we're also too, we're building the first hempcrete house in Taus on Taus Pueblo in June, um, working with the Taus Pueblo government as well. Um, hemp is used in building construction materials. They love it out there. The parts of the hemp plant currently used for construction are woody inner core for the hempcrete, which I have samples here, I can show you guys at the end. The outer fiber skin, uh, for hemp fiber bat insulation and hemp seed oil for hemp oil, wood finish, and depth stain. Hemp fiber bat insulation. Um, hemp fiber is bonded into sheets that we form and cut into a variety of dimensions, then installed as semi-rigid, um, batts. Between structural farming as a direct substitute to fiber box and many other typical insulation materials, hemp fiber insulation exhibits higher insulation performance, art value, but less other beneficial characteristics than hempcrete in its typical application. Hemp industry is a job industry. Hemp will create jobs in some of the hardest-hit sectors of the country. Um, rural agricultural equipment manufacturing, transportable processing equipment and crews. And the products could serve and develop the same community where the hemp is farmed, building ecological new homes, producing value-added and finished products, marketing, and so forth. Um, so the legal side, well, Wumaniti has been growing hemp through exercising under the federal laws enclosed in the Religious Freedom Restoration Act. Um, our organization announced ourselves, the DOJ, the DEA, and the state in May of 2015, that we were growing hemp in the state of New Mexico. We have successfully grown two research and development hemp fields since then, our announcement in 2015, and we are still in good standing, other less to say. Woo-hoo! We have grown two research and develop, or arena. Laws pertaining to the protection of the civil liberties of the Wumaniti Earth Native Sanctuary members are outlined in the First Amendment of the Bill of Rights, the United States Constitution, and more specifically described in the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act of 2000. The U.S. Farm Bill 2014. Since 1970, states have legalized the industrial cultivation of hemp despite federal laws prohibiting it. Research and the persistent public pushed President Obama to sign the U.S. Farm Bill 2014. The Farm Bill acknowledges that there is a chemical difference between industrial hemp and marijuana, defining it as the plant cannabis ativa L, any part of such plant, um, is keeping the, uh, tetra-cannabinol down, uh, which means THC concentration of no more than 0.3% uh, on a dry weight basis. Um, the bill allows state departments of agricultural and institutions of higher education, which Wumaniti Earth Native Sanctuary falls under, to cultivate industrial hemp for research purposes. Uh, we have a Wumaniti grower approval process. Uh, we have a certificate disclaimer where members of Wumaniti, our body of religious organization, believes it has the right, under the Constitution and Religious Freedom Restoration Act, to, one, possess and transport Wumaniti hemp plants and to grow the hemp plant to use and distribute. Certification will be valid for one year from the date of assurance. Um, Wumaniti is capable of ensuring that all the hemp seeds and crops in Taus fall under the 0.3% THC hemp classification requirement. Wumaniti will distribute the seeds and oversee the production of the hemp. Enforcing the requirement is imperative because a plant with no more than 0.3% THC level is deemed non-psychoactive. The Wumaniti grower approval process, uh, for our certification is, uh, Wumaniti conducts a thorough background check and application review, therefore charges a non-refundable fee of $75 to review the submitted application for a one-year certificate. If the application is approved, an additional $500 will be charged for inspection fee. As a Wumaniti representative, we'll inspect the hemp growing operation each month to certify compliance with all Wumaniti rules and regulations. All hemp seed will be distributed through the Wumaniti Earth Native Sanctuary. If and when approved, the licensed grower is required to sign our grower bylaws. These bylaws outline regulation, growing, processing, and distributing policies and guidelines. With approval to grow, the grower is required to do a 50/50 crop split with Wumaniti for the first year of growing. And actually that changed now, it's 20% if they provide the water and land and 30% if they, um, if they take care of it. A hemp grower's certi- certificate, um, for the specified location will then be issued and its chosen plant and/or land limit will be issued to the specified members upon, uh, Wumaniti's approval. And I believe that's it. Any questions?
Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, Commissioner Donald.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. There's a convention of a certificate for one year. Do you have to renew that or could you explain that certificate?
Yeah, so it's really just for the season. It's for the outdoor harvest season. And how that gets renewed is, it actually renews on mat every four months because we, we check it. So we actually just date it for every four months. And then they renew every year with their fee and resigning the application process, which is about, um, with the agreement application, it's about 12 pages.
How many acres are you growing now?
Um, we right now have seven acres in preparation.
And do you have a limit?
Um, right now, we don't have a limit. It's just based on what the farmer's performance. And right now, we're just keeping it small because everyone's, everyone that's been getting involved with us this year, um, including the Taus Pueblo government, this is their first year doing it. We've been doing it small, like acre, one acre fields the last two years.
We sell to markets. It's grown, what happens to it afterwards?
So yeah, so right now, um, we, we process it into hempcrete and then we have been just processing the seeds for just regrowing for the following years. But, um, we're hoping, um, after this year's grow, for next year, we'll be processing our seed into hemp hearts. I'll show you which those artists are, remind everybody hemp hearts is what's actually in our protein energy bar and, um...
Here, can we have a sample?
Oh, absolutely.
On that.
Yeah, I'm going to pass it around, soak it up and eat as much as I want. Actually, eating a tablespoon a day keeps the doctor away.
Oh, yeah, they're seeds.
Well, these are, um, these are the, they're the de-haul seeds. I have, I know, I have seeds too, if you want one of those. You can pass it around.
Please take the camera off.
So you just said, uh, your markets are these kind of products?
Yeah, so our markets are right now what we're able to process. Um, our goal is to, um, help people that have existing buildings here, um, that aren't at, being used right now, um, to turn those into processing facilities to do more than just the hempcrete and the seed processing.
Could you, could you explain hemp what?
Oh, hempcrete, yeah, it's so cool. So what you do is you take the stock and you wet it, you red it, and then you, you, you put it through, well, now they have these things called decorticators or machines that you put it through this machine and they just pull the middle out of it. So like old-fashioned, like we take like, you, you wet it, you let it dry, and then you put it between two pieces of wood and you just hit it. And then you get, then you get this. And this then you mix with lime and we're actually doing the hempcrete workshop on the Taus Pueblo, um, the second week of June, which I just got the flyer and I meant to bring it, but I can email it to you all. So if anyone wants to come out and check it out, six days, you need to learn how to build with hempcrete. So this is the one we do right away because it doesn't cost that much money to do. Now ideally it'd be nice to do fabrics, what they like, like hemp fabrics. Hemp fabric is so cool. Like this is hemp fabric. Here's some different samples here. Oh, yeah, and I'll pass around some other samples and stuff for you guys. So this is other stuff too that you can turn it into right away too. Like people, um, like we have a, a nonprofit, Espeñola, that they actually do a lot of mint, uh, like wool stuff with kids. They're going to be, um, doing stuff with hemp wool, um, with us. So I'll pass some, I'll pass some stuff around to you guys to check out.
So you said crete, is that, how you spell that, C-R-E-T-E?
C-R-E-T-E, huh, hempcrete. And you guys can YouTube and Google stuff, there's all, all kinds of stuff on the web.
So what, you have that analysis of the return for the farmer, like as far as how...
How much per acre?
Profitable it is per acre.
Yeah. For, um, for industrial hemp, um, for the first year, it's between $5,000 and $10,000 per acre. That's for the first year. Now, once it gets down, you get the waters down and you understand your land, or you already have this too first, or, um...
Then you say industrial, though, you're not talking about what you're doing now. That just, oh, by...
Oh, which one?
Industrial, so what?
For, for CBD?
With what you're doing now, what's the profit return on the acre is?
For, for what I'm doing now, our profit return per acre is $4,000.
Per acre.
Per acre. Yeah, it's pretty cool, huh?
Anything else, Commissioners?
Well, we have some property.
Anyway, um, any other question?
Do you want me to pass this around here? And these are all products you can buy at any store, anywhere. And I've got some other stuff too, like twine and ropes, you know? Ideally, fabric would be cool, but fa- fabric production is a lot of money. I mean, it's millions of dollars in equipment, something that would have to be done with creating stakeholders, which ideally too, like our goal is not to bring in anybody with money, our goal is to work with people that are here and to build with what is here. So, because we are a grassroots building organization, so we believe in keeping it grassroots. grassroots in this way.
Cool.
Are you working, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, are you working with all the hands of the Dura?
That's the creed.
You go. New nonprofit is trying to bring farmers...
I would love to learn more. I mean, I've just been super busy with this, but I would love to. I mean, any, anyone, I know, right? Ah, you can't get high from smoking it.
Smoke rate.
I know, right? Last thing too, if you pick hemp and you try to smoke it, because it does look a lot like marijuana, but it doesn't smell like it. But if you try to smoke it, you get a really bad headache. And another thing too that's cool about hemp, which a lot of things that cannabis growers don't like, is the hemp will actually pollinate cannabis grows and make cannabis plants not smokable. So, um, you know, that's, that's kind of another downfall that Colorado people are having right now because, you know, farmers have outdoor cannabis grows going, and then their hemp...
I think that's a downfall.
Yeah, another downfall, I know exactly, right guys?
Right.
That's right. So yeah.
All right, I'm getting hungry.
Are you? Keep eating more, yeah, literally a tablespoon a day.
I've got two spoons already.
Yeah, our bars that we make, which...
I can't believe all this came out of that little bag.
I know, that's cool. I still want...
I'm trying to get a trip on the Andy Pass Department.
Absolutely. Would love to.
All right, you know, we had you on the agenda, we kept missing it earlier, but I'm glad you finally got to come and present to us. Thank you for coming here today.
Thanks for having us. Yeah, we've just been really busy with this movement and, you know, helping people shift into this new paradigm, and, and then we run free kid outreach programs with horses and sacred ceremonies too, so just been pretty busy.
All right, is there a contact number here?
Yeah, I'm gonna give you guys my cards too. Thanks for marketing.
$14,000 an acre is pretty, pretty impressive.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's starting out. First year, don't think any more than five, but that's, I mean, we grew it last two years and we got it down.
Make more than that, make more on this if we're doing, it's marketing.
Yeah, I know, right? I know, and you're helping and healing people because that's what this plan does. It actually, we've been, um, I've been working with behavioral health on Taos Pueblo and giving people our energy bars, because it helps to balance their brain when they get sugar creamed, because they wanna drink alcohol. So, and then what else?
I wanna eat ice cream. I wanna eat ice cream.
I know, right? Ice cream, the side product also makes that help the boulder, yeah, it's great. There's so much you can do with this. That's the thing, there's not really competition because there's, there's such a need for it at this point, and so many products to be produced and made. I mean, it, it's beautiful. It truly is. Hemp is the answer to pretty much almost everything.
All right.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, please contact me, and please send me any information on any other nonprofits too. We love collaborating and supporting one another because that's what it's about, for us to survive, especially with this new presidential administration, so.
All right.
Lots of things, peace and love.
All right.
I'll check the card, we have an extra one.
And she's already presented the village request. Uh, she has not presented. Why don't you schedule a time that you can present to the village request? Yes. Spring more samples.
Bring more samples.
The mayor's here, he's inviting you to present to the village request of what is their commission, I mean their council meetings.
I would love to.
Well, I got to ask you a question.
Yeah, absolutely. And we have plenty of seeds still too, I mean...
They got land up there too.
Also for 15, so...
And you want to...
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Very true.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, we want to talk to our county manager and Mr. Flores about planting our property on some older...
All right.
Email me, Mom, and I'll...
All right. Well, thank you again for being here.
Oh, thank you.
Hope you got everything packed up, you got everything over here, Quest. We'll just go ahead and continue with everything. Again, thanks. All right. Uh, next item is item 8A of the department matters. This is a discussion on a update on the off-highway vehicles ATV on county paved roads, proposed ordinance that the sheriff has been working on for some time now.
Well, that's for you. Eat more, huh?
I got a pity, I got a pity, Sheriff. So, and then in the audience, you know, the one that contacted me was Billy Romano, and you've got some good information for us here today, Sheriff?
Well, I just wanted to get formally on the agenda so we can keep this process moving forward. As you know, yes, I took a look at some other ordinances from around Mexico that local municipalities and county governments have adopted, you know, post the law, the state law that would allow such a thing for OHVs to be allowable within the county jurisdiction. And for our purposes, the ordinance that is drafted and sitting with Ms. Baker, which hopefully has been shared with you guys by now, but I'm not real sure, primarily responds from Reddick Ordinance, Quest Ordinance, and Sebo County Ordinance. Sebo County, I took a lot of good information from there because it expanded into county jurisdictions and roads. It gives the option for commissioners or lawmakers to decide which areas would be acceptable, which areas would not be, if any. I think it reads really well, the restrictions, all the state laws are enhanced slightly for what I felt like would be our needs here in Taos County. It restricts to children being able to ride, it requires helmets for passengers that are under 18. It requires eye protection or windshield for all operators or passengers. It requires certain lighting equipment and exhaust to meet state regulations. Everything is drafted into that ordinance that I felt like, at least for a first draft, needed to be there. The part I did not go into is dividing the county and looking at any areas that may be for MacArthur or Sanctuary, or quiet areas, perhaps a golf course area, except for County Route 110. Honestly, I support it for being there on that paved road. It's a, it's a nice, pretty wide, straight road, speed regulated, road lane and so forth. And of course, any of the farming areas, I would certainly support it there because farming and ranching, they do utilize ATVs or side-by-sides for part of their daily operations. And then of course, you know, from a selfish standpoint perhaps, but for recreational purposes, to give the ability to unload at a staging area and go from trail to trail passing along county roads to get there, to access forest roads and so forth. Did bring a couple of people today just to show that, you know, for the commission, there is quite a bit of support for this throughout our community. There's still some questions from other members of the community. And I just basically wanted to give a presentation and an update on this proposed ordinance and ask the commission to take it from, from my hands at this point and move it forward to Florida, as being to be the best of, the best means for me to make this come to pass.
Chairman, Commissioner, so thank you. I did get a draft from the sheriff. The draft is fairly general and liberal about allowing OHVs use. My thought was, I'd like to consult with the planning department and focus on neighborhoods. From my experience with these, some neighborhoods are very supportive, others may not be. And we do have jurisdiction over our accessory roads as a county. And I think this particular draft that I got doesn't distinguish between accessory roads and any roads. So in other words, I always, over a safe company, I think up there, there are a lot of accessory side roads. And kiddos ride the OHVs all the time. Some neighbors like it, some don't. And we might want to do some study around accessory road use and decide which accessory roads are appropriate to have OHVs, certainly in axons or maybe adjacent to public lands or other neighborhoods. Volumes up for lots of colonies as an example, because I'm looking at zoning there, they may not be so well. So my thought was to get with the planning department on Friday, I have a meeting with them on zoning issues anyway. I don't know if we want to get a task force involved or study the issue in terms of zones or zoning, or allow for liberal use of OHVs to affect the county. I mean, I'm open, I just need some, some help with that before I finalize an ordinance.
Mr. Chair.
Vice Chair. These ordinances can always be amended. I think, uh, I, I support what has been drafted. I think that, one, I appreciate those suggestions to go through, but that'll take us through another one or two, and we'll get, the summer will hit. We're trying to help promote this kind of outdoor recreation become friendly for that purpose, where visitors come visit our area. We will be able to fast track this a little bit into the ordinance that it has been proposed, and then amend that as a trial and error, understanding, and maybe designating areas where we may want to remove those ATV uses, only because I see that in the village request as well. You know, people are really eager to get out there to ride, but they're saying, where can go? Is the county approving this? Where can we ride? What changes? It's just becoming something where you say yes, but then there's too many more hurdles to move. I don't know if it's something that we should consider, Mr. Baker, moving forward and then as we see what this does for the summer, and have one good summer under our belts, knowing then pull back, and then the users will understand as well where we, why we do it.
We've agreed that the overlays that are adopted can certainly address certain areas that you were talking and stuff like that.
Chairman, Commissioners, the proposal by the sheriff would allow them anywhere, the way I read it, so in any neighborhood, any, any road, and the county would allow for, or, oh, sorry, ATV, OHVs.
Except, if I'm being...
Go ahead, and I'll go.
Okay. Chairman, Commissioner, except, I did need to point out that we don't currently have this governing body, and you don't currently have jurisdiction over state highways. However, passing to the ordinance exactly what Mr. Diego mentioned, we can then go back and request or petition the state to allow on certain roads. Obviously, like I said, would not be one that we would want to ask for, even within our jurisdiction. It's too heavily congested already, didn't come along with any problems of that. However, perhaps State law 230, where she mentioned, might be one that we would want to petition the state for to allow for that. Or Highway 578, the small stretch from Redder Municipal Limits to the end of the pavement, there's about a four-mile stretch of our trail accesses that are outside of the town limits that could be allowed over there and so forth, but we...
That is essential, I think.
It is very essential, and it would, it would support the initiative that Redder has already taken. It would support 230, even though it's technically the central community, it would support a lot of Questa initiatives already made. So there are many areas that we would want to be able to go back, once we have an ordinance, and then petition the state, because the state ultimately has jurisdiction over those roadways. And it would just simply complement our ordinance by allowing greater access and travel to those designated trails or harm routes and so forth.
Anything else to share?
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioners. I think if we could follow the procedures we've done in the past where the ordinance is presented to us as discussion, we make changes during that time, and then it's brought back. I would like to have the opportunity to let constituents, if there are, say, private roads, and they have objection to ATV use, that we have some kind of procedure, that their petition for those particular roads, to allow these people who don't want their roads, private roads used for ATV use, give them the opportunity to have a say, so...
Because it's an ordinance, there would have to be public hearings associated. They would be advertised, and the ordinance would be published, so they would have it ahead of time, and they would come to the public hearing just as any other one.
So I, I would like to have that procedure where we first have discussion, then we bring it back. Discussion also seems to be helpful in having additions in. My main concern, I haven't looked at it, but my main concern would, to control ATV use on private roads where it is not wanted. And then my next question is, natural monument, can you drive them over in the national monument?
Oh no, those are... That's federal, that's not our jurisdiction.
Chairman, Commissioner, hold on a second. Chairman, Commissioner Mal, the, I think the challenge with the private road issue is that throughout the county, there are roads that are named with names, and we're working on naming and naming scene, and it might be unclear in a lot of circumstances whether a road is private, you know, it's historically an easement across like a family transfer, and then eventually became a county road or a county maintained road, or whether it's a designated county road. So it might be helpful for us to look at our inventory of roads that we maintain. We pass a resolution every spring, look at that map and determine what is an accessory county road. And then the ordinance, again, it's up to you all how you want to regulate those roads. I think the private roads, we would say they're not allowed unless it's private use. I mean, we wouldn't condone it on a private road.
Commissioner Blenner.
Thank you, Chairman. So I support it for recreation and working, but you know, because of noise and safety issues, which are going to hear from people, it's not going to be appropriate in every kind of road. And so I would, I'd prefer actually the attorney's approach, doesn't have to take that long, you know, isolating those places that you've already itemized for us, you know, and some others, I'm sure. Questa, there's, it may well run through that hall of Questa because of recreation and work. But there's a lot of neighborhoods where I doubt it would be popular or appropriate.
Go ahead, Sheriff.
Chairman, Commissioners, let me point out that private roads are just that, they are private roads. They do not have enforceability over those currently, nor would we have with this ordinance. They are allowable there. There is nothing that restricts them from, an example, my road that I live on is Black Copper Canyon Road. It is not a deeded or dedicated county road, therefore it is wide open.
Yeah, I understand that, and I understand that the purpose of the ordinance is to provide a network so you can get from, you know, one of those private roads possibly to recreational areas, themes that you're working on, but... The other thing of this ordinance that the sheriff talked about that maybe we might have missed is, there's safety factors that are built into this that are not currently being utilized by the public that's doing this anyway. The helmets, the lines, and the mufflers and stuff like that. So he's taken the, the safety approach all the way through on this, and I think that's also echoed by the people that have supported this since they've talked to us over the year. How about the noise issues? Is that, can you regulate the noise issue? Because, you know, I'm anticipating what we're going to be hearing at the hearing.
Well, I can answer that very simply. Yes, it would be regulated by the ordinance, and the enforcement side of that is a whole other issue. It's simply like, if you have a street glide Harley-Davidson that has straight pipe running down the street glide now, it's probably above the allowable decibel limit of 88 decibels. But is that something that's routinely enforced? No, we're usually fishing for bigger fish, right?
And Chairman, Commissioners, I'll add, in order to enforce, you'd need a decibel meter, or you get into a slippery slope about what constitutes a nuisance and what doesn't. And the ordinance that was presented to me does not regulate noise.
Regulating noise probably does, that's a good way to go. I agree on that. But it, it, the fact that you can't regulate the noise, I think, is an argument in favor of being somewhat selective. I do think that there's going to be some kind of roads where it may not be appropriate.
And you may be right. I guess, you know, very for me today, I would like to see this move forward, and then as we identify issues or problems, address those as, as they come to our attention. Or we can take the other approach where the whole community's, I'll promise you, that's going to be a very lengthy process if we don't miss this summer season.
Not yet, so yeah. Darrell?
I'm here, Mr. Reddick. To interact on that, Mr. Reddick, on, you know, the mechanic, Darrell.
Thank you.
Um, given the category trade, these OHVs and UTVs now click through a spark arresters, you cannot make them melt because they won't be allowed on forest roads. Reason being is, when they are, they'll emit sparks, can cause fires and stuff like that. Reason being is when they are, they'll emit sparks, can cause fires and stuff like that, so it makes them illegal automatically. So, in rest assured, a lot of the O H Vs and U T Vs that are being utilized right now have those sparkers and mufflers, so they'll be.
Those are required by the sheriff.
Yes, and it's actually mandatory, or even if they're allowed, they come out of the factory.
Thank you.
So you know.
I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, what's the age, lower age limit of?
Eighteen.
Eighteen? So what happens when you, kids that are thirteen, fourteen?
For operators, it would be over eighteen.
What if you've got kids that are thirteen, fourteen driving around?
They would be, they would be, they would follow the forest regulations if they're on forest roads for what's allowable there, but for the purpose of our ordinance, it would be to operate within county roads to gain access, it's going to have to be an operator over eighteen. All passengers that are under eighteen must wear helmets.
And that's by state law.
The ordinance that was presented to me doesn't have an age, and I understand it to be fourteen, but we can get together and.
How do you do that?
Probably do.
If, if there's any way that we can get an agreed copy by the next meeting for the discussion, as Commissioner O'Donnell requested, and then start the process of advertising the ordinance, if we don't need it, I would, I would just like, as Vice Chair Daigle said, to have the opportunity to get this in place, and if we don't start the clock now, because it takes forever, eighteen days, to do an ordinance, and it's a lot easier to amend an ordinance than it is to adopt one. So I would really like the clock to start, and we can hash things out between now and then.
Sure. The advertising, I do believe it must be advertised, and we should do our due diligence to let the community know if this can be discussed.
And you'll continue with Daryl, Billy, and everybody that's been very passionate about this, and so I think we'll get a pretty good finished product by the time sprint.
Mr. Daigle, as well.
Yeah, you're on that committee, Mark.
Really, I've been a formalized committee, I took this upon myself to draft it, and one needs to be reviewed, and I, because now it's ready to go, we'll do the next level.
Is that acceptable, Mr. Baker, before you start the clock?
I guess I am unclear with, the Commissioners like to see the ordinance as drafted by the sheriff, and you like legal to work on an ordinance that would lack for some regulation, or would we like to just discuss areas of the county and distribution between accessory roads and major materials? I'm not clear.
Maybe we can add that to what the sheriff already has, because he's using from Trident and past ordinances that are in effect and seem to be working, so.
And again, his ordinance would allow use on any road in the county.
In the meantime, we can have discussion, as Commissioner O'Donnell asks and stuff, and you could, you could maybe come up with something, and I think we're all about compromise, but I'd really like to get some time in place.
I do need to clarify, Mr. Baker, if it's any county under control of roadway, not private roadways, not roadways in municipalities, and not state roadways. Any roadways under federal, only roadways that we control.
Yeah, sorry. Okay, you can worry.
Commissioner O'Donnell. The, I mean, we can take a look, we can take a look for discussion at the blueprint ordinance that you presented, and that way, through the discussion, maybe there'll be more direction for the department, to see which way we're, the majority's going to go.
And I could bring that to you, nice meeting, and the draft that the sheriff provided.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to work with legal, because I still have concerns about private roads, and I'm doing the.
We are under jurisdiction.
We do have jurisdiction over private roads, so I want to have some legal questions answered. There seems to be a little confusion here. I do believe, we do have authority over private roads, so.
Chairman Commissioners, I think the confusion is, we have authority over our accessory roads or designated county roads. I think where the confusion comes in is what is a county road? Because we're maintaining some roads in the county that may have not, that may have historically private, but that's true especially in Seco, I think, and Topa, where it's been ag, and what is the status of a road? So we are going to get into that situation where it's not clear, and I think getting our map of maintaining roads might be helpful, because it shows clearly what we may, what we're maintaining, and there's an argument if we're maintaining it, it is a county road.
If we passed that, an ordinance, it would be enforceable on our inventory of maintained roads. That would be.
That might be, Mr. Commissioners.
Because that's the, that's.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, sir, as a suggestion to that, Mr. Baker, why don't we simply just look and identify the current existing county roads, and specify those in the ordinance, that these roadways would be allowed? That would eliminate the private roadways, because they wouldn't be named, because they're not county or under our control.
I think a map you suggest would be helpful, so we know which accessory roads we're talking about, and then, again, the ordinance you've provided, which I'll bring back to the board if they direct, does allow for unlimited use on any county road.
And we could get an email copy of that today, so we can start our research.
Mr. Redken.
Mister. Comment, Billy O'Donnell. Mr. Chairman Commissioners, I presented this rough draft that the sheriffs come up with, and I think if we use communities around Beniasco, Arroyo Seco, some people around the Carson area with the line in business, and I mean, I'm around the community, while there is a lot of support with it as a way it's drafted right now, I think that if we continue and define reasons to try to dissect this, and become more stringent with it, right now, the safety effect is in place, you know, as far as young drivers, the noise, that's already been addressed. Private roads, I don't feel that we can even enforce that into that area there, but there is a lot of roads in the community that, I'm sure we're going to meet with opposition on it, but one of the things that we got to remember is that this is not for riders to go racing down the roads. The intent is for the departments to be able to access areas, for hunters to be able to get from point A to point B, for us recreational riders to get through forest roads where it's allowed. We do not intend, and I don't think it's the intent of the, of the draft itself, to be able to give us the opportunity to race up and down the roads. You know, I, I feel that it will help law enforcement by enforcing it, or giving the incentive to enforce it, plus, these young riders will be required to wear helmets, will be required to wear eye protection. You won't see a fourteen year old, because it will be something that can be enforced. At the end of the day, it's about safety, and we've had accidents in the past, and myself, I've been racing down the road to get off of the road before I get top. So, you know.
Toughen.
Toughen. But that's been over seven years ago. You know, we started looking at the noise as an active motorcycle rider, I think this would just lead into, you know.
Any one of your bikes are louder than your A T Vs? Your Harley's?
But anyhow, you know, I do see a lot of community support, and I've taken, like I said, just the rough draft that the sheriff here has, has worked on, I think there's a lot of work into it, and I really feel that you guys need to expedite this before the season is over, with, as you guys have mentioned, you know, everything can be amended after this. So let's move forward with it, let's give the people, give them a reason to come to the community up here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Redken.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, how do you address someone who didn't contact me, who was complaining about somebody driving up and down their private road? Do you want people to start taking the launch of their own hands on private roads with these four wheelers?
Of course, we would.
Well, how, and how do you address this problem as a law enforcement officer, to help these people who have true complaints? I'm not talking about the general ordinance, and I think we have time to add our own language based on what legal advises, so I don't see us slowing down this process. You know, we have the right to add to these ordinances. So, how do you help these people who complain about these A T Vs on their private roads?
Again, we have no enforcement ability, we have very limited enforcement ability on private roads. Traffic infractions, aside from a D W I, which has a specific intent to it that actually states in the law that says anywhere within this state. O H V and traffic regulations do not specify that, therefore we don't have, currently nor will we have with this ordinance, enforceability on those private roads. It's not just that, it's a private road, my driveway is my private driveway. And unfortunately, I can't unless, have enforcement, unless we contact that person and give them a notice, and then if they repeat that violation, we can look at trespass. And unfortunately, that is our limitations as law enforcement throughout the state, any agency.
Well, I, I'd like to research in case law, because I'm, I'm not sure there may be a way to get around it. It sounds like sheriff, you've got all these ordinances, not just this, maybe we need a code enforcement officer related to violations of all our ordinances, our land use, our animal control, or this ordinance, maybe you're going to need at some point an extra staffer to enforce ordinances, because obviously it's hard to enforce these with your staff.
We can certainly talk about those avenues at some point, but, you know, for right now, this is a, just a presentation that I wanted to, that's commission know what we've done, what I've drafted, and what I've submitted for legal review, and to get it into your hands, so we can move forward from there, whether that be approval or denial, it's certainly up to the commission board. I feel good about it, I wouldn't be up here updating you if I didn't feel that there's possibility to come from this. I do believe in talking to, Sheriff Mace, the sheriff of Seawo County, who implemented this last year, they actually reported less crashes and injuries relating to L H Vs, for exactly the reason that he stated. People currently were doing that anyway, but they were hurrying to try and get there, or it was kids that were hurrying to try to get there. Dad sent me down to the ranch, I go deliver these two bales of hay, whatever the reasons were, I would, I hope and I think that we're going to see the same benefit in ordinance levels. But we won't know unless we try.
Good point. Thank you, Sheriff.
All right. Thank you.
Item B is discussion consideration and decision regarding job description of executive secretary for the sheriff's office to be presented by our human resources director. Good morning, Ms. Weber.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. Are you?
We're here.
All right, I do have a job description for executive secretary, this is correct. This is a position that is allowed under statute for the sheriff to have in his office, and it was never created before during our previous cop study and the combination of job descriptions that we have. So this is the creation of the job description itself.
We've all had a chance to review it, Mr. Corvino.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to let you know that this is a statutory allowance for the sheriff. This is one of those kind of like, it's under sheriff position, or statutory.
Assistant, Deputy, Treasurer, so.
So I just wanted to.
Any discussion, Commissioner? I entertain a motion.
Where is it? Move the movement. B. Oh, so this is for a decision, and this is just to approve the description, which I assume would then be published for fill the position. And do, do we have any questions?
Or you would.
Possibly.
This is a position that would be allowed to be appointed by the sheriff. Is there anyone actually to oppose you for?
I see. Now, do you have any questions about the sheriff's budget, how this fits in, our oversight of this budget, is there any issues?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Black, you're on the position, as it currently stands as a classified position with an individual filling it, the intention would be to move that individual into this executive secretary position. So the budget's already there, we've already allowed this classified position to be employed over the last few years or at least, and so I don't see a legitarian happening, maybe please.
Thank you, I'll help with that, I'll make a motion.
Quick discussion about.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the job description of the executive secretary for the sheriff's office, discussion by Sheriff Daigle.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Weber, is this a salary position, or is it power?
The position as an appointee is set by salary. The statute doesn't specifically set the salary rate for appointees.
So they can work twenty hours or forty hours as wish, if they're actually employed. I mean, I'm just trying to get an idea of what this person's work schedule is going to look like, having executive secretary not say that does not, it may not be, say that it's needed, and it's something that we need to make sure that you're not, forty thousand dollar salary, and then do twenty-four hours per day minimum, you know, I want to make clear that we're not.
Any requests of, from the sheriff is to, to consider this position at eighty percent of his current salary?
And, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Daigle, it will mean that they were not able to approve, they weren't able to approve Secret Service annual, that's expect our deputy assessor, or the other positions to be over. It is the essential position, so it's really up to the elected sheriff to make sure that they're getting the work out of this position. You're right that there is some leeway of flexibility, but the workflow as presented in the job description is very similar to the position as it currently stands, which is a pretty, it's a full-time position. So the work feels there, to keep them busy for forty hours, it really is up to the elected to keep, keep them going, and keep them busy, and to monitor that.
Commissioner O'Donnell, anything? Pleasure, Commissioner, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion, hearing, or.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Yes, Commissioner Black and Commissioner Daigle.
Yes.
Chairman O'Donnell.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Weber. Oh, we have a few here in a second, so hang out. Thanks. Item C is discussion consideration and decision regarding transfer of an ambulance to Questa volunteer fire department EMS system, to be presented by our EMS chief, walking as also, before you start, I saw your dad the other day with you, and he looked really good, so.
Yes, thank you.
Give them our best.
Year and a half.
Yep.
That's awesome. Yeah, so.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. It's been a while since I've come up with one, so that's a good thing. Several months ago, I was approached by the EMS director from Questa stating that they were requesting assistance from us, both of their ambulances were out of service, one of them had to be put out of service because of a engine issue that was going to cost them about twenty thousand dollars to fix. That was your primary unit. Their backup unit, which is, I believe, like a nineteen ninety-eight Ford, I don't remember if the chief's name is, got that in a minute years ago, and I was, were starting off the EMS system out of service because of a piece of leaf or something, he stated. So they came to us and asked if they can borrow one of our ambulances until they have a solution. So for the last couple of months, they've been using one of our trucks, has probably been a miles, hundred and seventy some thousand, but it's a top running truck, so they've been using that for a couple of months. About a month ago, I received a letter from, written out for about stating that they were requesting assistance, they didn't have the money in their budget to fix both of these trucks. And so we had a four by four ambulance that's been sitting down as a backup unit for several, several months. It's a big truck for us here in House, it's a four by four. The crews and myself tend not to put it out on the streets, because it's just a really rough ride for us here in House, and then for transfer wise, it's, it's unfeasible. So it's been sitting down as a backup truck, the unit twenty-seven, twenty-nine, to two thousand and twelve Ford F four fifty. So she requested that we maybe consider transferring that unit up to Questa to sort of give them the availability of a truck for the northern part of the county. I said that with my two supervisors, Chris and Wayne, and we discussed it, and both were in agreement that we're not really using it, they only ask fifty-seven thousand dollars on it, and so, you know, rather than it just be sitting and not be used, we'll transfer it to Questa.
At this time, I would make a motion to approve this transfer of the ambulance to Second. The motion is set. Hearing then. Mr. Chairman, just a couple comments. I do believe that.
I do believe that this support that Taos County has been able to work with the village of Questa, Mr. Gonzalez, I appreciate that. It's a service that we need in our northern part of the community and being able to drive vehicles in the roads that are, the ability to have that use on those roads in the county out there would be of great appreciation. The coordinator has done a whole 360 turnaround that maybe we'll have seen that there's been a lot more fill-ins for shift work, and hopefully we can continue to have this collaborative work between the county and the village. And this is one great way of showing that support to the northern part of the community. And it's a, I let service calls it, it runs after North of Questa, and it's been great to work with you guys.
All right. Hearing no further discussion, clerk color roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenham.
Yes.
Vice Chair Agos.
I will accuse myself of.
Chairman Bev.
Yes. Walking, thank you for this. This is awesome.
Excuse me. Thank you for the proclamation. Next week is GMS week. We celebrate that every meeting, last week of May. We've been very fortunate for the last couple of years as a citizen in Taos County. That's taken the recognition, and we used to throw in our own money and barbecue and appreciate of our staff. And Kat Durant has, last two years, put her time and dedication to cook for our folks over at the EMS base. And so, you know, we're going to have that again next week. And so, yeah, we're celebrating, so sort of family together.
All right. Should we do the barbecue all weekend long or?
I wish. We have been running nonstop, as you can see, I have 15 this morning because I've been working quite a bit. And so, yeah, we've been really busy, short-handed, and so I've been covering a lot of shifts. But, yeah, so I think it'll be next Friday.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Gonzalez, I do miss you here. You did make a reference, it's probably good you haven't been here, but it would be now nice, and once in a while, you did come and give us an overall report, maybe give us an assessment of how things are going. And I did want to thank you for all your hard work on Mother's Day because I did see posts on the Taos news about the rescue efforts, and you've been down in the gorge and all the issues that came up down there. So I want to thank you for that extra work and congratulate.
Thank you. You have had items at every meeting, but they've been on our consent agenda, so I don't want you to think he's not doing it either. He's been very busy and he's been, he's had items on every meeting.
I tried to get the onshore end of the month report, but I hope you guys can see those as well, just showing you how our regulations are coming in, status of staffing, our equipment, et cetera. So I don't know if you share that, share it with them, you know, but I try to get those to everyone.
Thank you. It's not your agenda any further.
Yeah, okay. But, Mr. Chairman, I would like at some point to get a tour of his facility here.
I have his cell phone. If you don't have it, I'll give it to you.
Yeah, definitely. Come on by.
You know, I'd like to go through the county manager so I'm not like.
Perfect.
Doing anything, parents of, anything improper, so.
All right.
I'm making a formal public announcement. I want to look at the facility.
We did.
All right. I am D. again with Ms. Weber. This will be a discussion, consideration, and decision regarding new job description for Groundskeeping Technician, a seasonal position in the Facility Management Department, and Mr. Flotis is also available for any questions we may have.
Yes, Commissioner, that is correct. This is a position that is being created to fill two temporary slots. It is supposed to be seasonal in nature and to assist with groundskeeping of all of the areas that we have for our facilities to maintain.
Any questions of Ms. Weber or Mr. Flotis? Entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I will entertain a motion to approve the job description for Groundkeeper Technician.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the new job description for Groundskeeping Technician, seasonal position within the Facilities Management. Please, I say.
I'll second it. I guess Joshua's taking the tree course, right? What is that called? Arborist. It's becoming a.
There was a program that was presented to us, and we had difficulty to fill two slots in that due to, you know, weren't loaded in staffing levels. Joshua has participated in that, and he's going to become a certified arborist. And I hope he'll work to bring what he's learned, you know, to the job and allow us to better, more properly take care of it.
So let me say to say Joshua will become a tree doctor.
It isn't for you.
All right. I'm going to call him that from now on. Let him know ahead.
I do have to ask Mr. Flotis if I may, Mr. Chairman, if this is adequate for what you need, because I've always been a supporter of giving you more work because I see what overload you get into. So are you happy with this? I just would like to hear your opinion.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just for the record, I did have something prepared that I did want to say, and thank you for your question, Commissioner. First and foremost, I want to thank management, Mr. Corbala, and Mr. O'Neil, along with Human Resources and Ms. Weber for bringing this forward. To you guys, I want to thank you guys for your time and your consideration with this. I was hired as a General Services Director in 2008. When I was hired, the department assisted us six maintenance technicians at that time. Wayne Chagas, Vito Trubil, Jack Ride, Victor Ortiz, Manuel Vito, and David Vito. At that point in time, the Taos County complex was not constructed, and Taos County did not oversee the senior program, nor did the Facilities Department perform any work at our Taos County fire stations or take on any construction or special projects. Currently, the Facilities Management Department has a staff of five maintenance technicians, one shy of our 2008 staffing levels. This is to include Joshua Suazo, Vito Trubil, Manuel Vito, Larry Espinoza, and Joe Gonzalez. The Facilities Management Department maintenance staffing is one maintenance technician shy of the 2008 numbers. Since 2008, the Facilities Department has increased its capabilities, responsibilities, and workload. We oversee regular building and grounds maintenance on a total of 25 facilities, including the 10-acre Espinoza's apartment. The 25 facilities that we regularly attend to does not include our fire districts or the regular special event and meeting setups that we are tasked with weekly. The Facilities Management Department not only oversee day-to-day building and grounds maintenance, but we are taking over management of many construction and remodel projects throughout the county. We have successfully and timely completed many of those construction, remodel, and specialty projects throughout Taos County in the last few years. Due to our mainly staff department, I feel as a director, we are not able to effectively perform regularly scheduled preventive building and grounds maintenance as should be expected. We are not able to get enough of what I call hands on the equipment. Just as Nathi needs to get touches on the ball in order to maintain and improve his corporate skill, we, the Facilities Department, need adequate staffing levels in order to be able to get more hands, eyes, and ears on our buildings, their grounds, and their building systems. I ask the commission to hear our need for regular full-time maintenance technicians in order to improve our maintenance capabilities and performance. The grounds maintenance, the grounds technician that has been created is going to definitely help us. It's going to allow my more skilled maintenance technicians, such as Joshua, Larry, and Joseph, to be able to attend to the preventive maintenance, the more technical stuff. Right now, we've time to get bogged down doing lower-level grounds maintenance at all these properties. I mean, you know, right now, something that's under schedule is the Sheriff's Department. The leads over there are about a foot tall. We haven't been able to get there. We've been taking care of the leads here. Ground maintenance in the park, we got ground maintenance at the Rosick Community Center, ground maintenance at the Health Department, you know, all over the county. That does include roof leaks, painting projects within here. We set up the commission meeting this morning, we set up yesterday for the NAC conference meeting. We have effectively been able to get things done. And I think the support of management and Human Resources in allowing this position to be created, but as we move forward down the line, I feel to some point we've kind of regressed. We're one maintenance technician shy of 2008 levels. Our responsibilities and workload just five fifty fold. You don't hear me complain. My guys don't complain. We get it done, but it is very time-consuming, stressful, and, you know, we could use it as we evolve, basically full-time, regular maintenance technicians, as budget and funds permit and so forth. But I'm very faithful to her.
Bringing this back to the agenda item, hearing no other discussion on the agenda item, clerk color roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Yes, Commissioner Blackenham.
Yes.
Vice Chair Agos.
Yes.
Chairman Bev.
Yes.
And, Mr. Chairman, I would like to thank our management because I think I have been harping on this for a couple of years, at least get him some temps, but if there's a way to find it in our budget to give him another maintenance person, I think he needs it. You know, 2008, that's a long time ago. So if, you know, I would hope maybe at some point we could get the commission's support and then we could thank him that extra.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Bring him up to staffing.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
Just one more thing to mention on that. We've also, over the last few years, really tried to take on the initiative of getting better equipment, better, the kind of equipment that allows the staff to work a little bit smarter and less harder. So we've gotten John here, Mo were out at the baseball parks, we've gotten Push, Snow Knower. So a few of those things have been our attempt to try and alleviate the fact that we are short-staffed, and we know that, and that is one of the things we felt we could do without the reoccurring costs. So we are always looking at ways to help make their work easier or smarter at least than they do work very, very hard. So we're very appreciative of the folks at facilities. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you're like, I have.
No, go ahead, Mark.
Through discussion with management, this is a first step in trying to attend to these needs. You know, what I stayed earlier, just wanted to share what we have been going through. This is going to be some seasonal workers that is going to, that are going to come in, and we need them most now in the summer, and they'll hopefully, they'll end their temporary employment towards the end of winter when stove fall is going to diminish. So it's going to be really helpful, you know, really grateful for you.
Yeah, we're glad to be able to do it, and we do appreciate and recognize that we're getting a lot more from our five-member staff than we used to from our six, and that's a bold impulse. And we're glad that the manager mentioned that, that we're trying to help out the tools too. So this will be great for the summer, and we'll see how it goes.
Is it important to be able to get more things done for the county?
Thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell, for staying with us. Thank you. It's a good take. All right. Next, hi, Commissioner O'Donnell, you doing okay?
Doing well.
All right. Glad to see you. Thank you. We're actually on item nine, budget matters. And this will be discussion, consideration, and decision regarding the approval of our 2017, 18 fiscal year preliminary budget. For a little lead-in on this, the budget was presented at a workshop to the commissioners two weeks ago, and we had the opportunity to speak with her, and so what I've asked is that she present things in a summary format, her and the manager, and we'll do this as is necessary to have done. Mr. Corbala.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. As the original budget calendar have indicated, we're going to try to do a special meeting on the 23rd, which we feel is not necessarily necessary at this time. We'll go ahead and present the budget without any changes from the work study from two weeks ago. That's what you're getting today. I just want to, first of all, thank Ms. Martinez and all the finance department for all the hard work that it took for them to prepare this budget. They started sometime right after the New Year began in January, and I also want to thank all of the elected officials and department heads for working with them. It has been tight budget. We are not experiencing major windfalls, however, we're very confident that this will not create any anticipated impacts on our staff. So as I mentioned in the work study, our capital budget very dependent on PILTS, and without the full funding being authorized at this time, we're waiting to create that capital budget over the summer months. We do have a pipeline of projects that will be able to continue moves based on some of the money to put aside, however, no PILTS would need a description in future capital projects. And that's unfortunate, and we really got to continue to fight for that PILTS. One more thing to mention, we are working on doing a staffing analysis and a continuation of our comp plan in order to truly assess what our needs are for staff and employees at the county. And until that is completed, we are going to look at doing a freeze on any increases at this time. So any new salary increases will be held off until the comp facility and staffing analysis is complete. It's just difficult to truly determine what is the fairest way to go forward on increases without knowing exactly what our staffing analysis looks like. So those are the main points I had. Like I mentioned, no changes from the work study two weeks ago, and I stand for any questions. Ms. Martinez is in the audience as well. We stand for any questions.
Chair. Vice Chair Agos. Is it okay if we will take a short, I mean, break before the presentation unless the presentation.
This is the.
This is the.
This is the.
This is the.
I was going to say, after we approve this, I was going to ask for a.
Oh, okay.
In that case, I'm going to motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary 2017, 2018 fiscal year budget as presented by Ms. Martinez. Clerk color roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenham.
Yes.
Vice Chair Agos.
Yes.
Chairman Bev.
Yes. Luke, thank you so much. This is, and you can have a little break until the final is done, is due in July 31st. But you and your staff, this is a really good policy document for this commission, and I recognize the hard work that you guys do, so thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add, thank you very much, Luke. I had the pleasure of going over the budget with me personally. Again, I'm still going to reiterate to find an extra position in the Facilities Department for Mr. Flotis if there's any money that we could adjust the budget to give him that extra position because I think he really needs it. Thank you.
Very well said. Anything else? Thank you, staff. Okay, Commissioner, at this time, I would entertain, let me take a short break. We have a very lengthy executive session following the consent agenda and the manager's report, so I'd like to have a little break right now, if that's okay.
Sure.
Most of it in the section. Finally, we will come back at five after 11:00. No, let's say 11:00. Yeah, we'll shoot for 11:00, which means sit 20 out here. Do you guys? All right.
Thank you.
Clerk color roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Yes. Commissioner Blackenham.
Yes.
Vice Chair Agos.
Yes.
Chairman Bev.
Yes. Thank you. I call this meeting back to order, or I entertain a motion to come out. I have a break. Motion and a second.
Second.
Okay, clerk color roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Yes. Commissioner Blackenham.
Yes.
Chairman Bev.
Yes. Okay, I will now read the consent agenda. If the commissioner has any questions regarding any of the items, we'll pull it off after the discussion. They must be heard or postponed to a specific time prior to any of the business being taken on by the commission today. Item A is approval of contract TCC 2017-032 with Morgan Mountain Constructors for those quarter of this year improvements. Item B is discussion, consideration, and decision regarding approval of an easement agreement and right-of-way, right-of-entry between Alan Packer, Patricia DePaulman, and Taos County. Item C is discussion, consideration, and decision regarding approval of easement agreement and right-of-entry between Francis I. Ferguson and Nancy A. Call and Taos County. Approval of, item D is approval of agreement between Taos County and Morgan Mountain Constructors for use of senior center. Item E is approval of budget adjustment from Fleet Department Fund. Item E is approval of budget adjustment for Fleet Department Fund 0101-1127. Item F is approval of budget adjustment for Adult Attention Center Fund 0226-1700. And G is approval of budget adjustment for Public Works Fund 0204-1600. And finally, H, approval of DFA Resolution Number 33 for 2016-17 fiscal year resolution requesting transfer of temporary cash for General Fund Public Works Fund. I've read the consent agenda and I entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I also have a motion for approval. I would like to have some detailed explanations of item B, C, and D.
Okay, we will be, your motion then is approved A, E, F, G, and H. And we will remove B, C, and D for immediate discussion following the vote. Do I hear a second?
I hear a second.
Okay. Clerk Colerole.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Yes. Commissioner Blakenhart.
Yes.
Vice Chair Agers.
Yes.
Chairman Lebron.
Yes. Item B is discussion, consideration, and decision regarding approval of easement agreement and right-of-entry between Alan Packer, Patricia De Palma, and Taos County. Mr. Hameen.
Yes, Chairman, our engineer Jonathan Bennett negotiated an easement agreement and right-of-way entry for the two subject properties. So it's a couple in each and Ms. Baker worked very closely in getting this easement agreement done. Staff went out and met up with Mr. Packer, Ms. De Palma, along with Mr. Ferguson and Ms. Call and getting their signatures in the agreement for this right-of-way entry. So it's necessary as part of the construction because this area is one of the lower parts of most quarter of this road, so we're building it up and installing new culverts.
Additional culverts.
Additional culverts and also drainage.
If I may, Chairman, a few questions. This easement agreement is a little bit complicated, but there are different parts to it. Each property owner is allowing for sort of a French drain, I'll call it, so river coming out of most part of us for drainage on their property. And then in addition to that, to allow for adequate drainage, they're getting this easement to enter and construct culverts under their driveway as the existing culverts are in that shape. And then we have a right-of-entry perpetually to go in and make any maintenance changes to those culverts.
So, so Mr. Chairman, may you grant, is this connected then to item A?
Yes.
It's all within that vicinity. Now what is, from what point to what point will that happen?
This is right across from Sheila Granger's area.
It's very familiar, Mr. Chairman.
That washout is where there's currently two culverts and I believe a total of five culverts will be in about a quarter-mile area to try to fix that drainage.
The maps are too big to scan, we do have enough available.
And so the project itself, paving itself, that happened from C-110?
From the transfer station to C-110. I don't know which direction I go in.
Mr. Peric is going to start from both sides.
Okay.
June 19th is the official start date, we actually might be able to go a week earlier, on June 10th.
Okay, so that's item B, I entertain a motion. Move for approval, Mr. Chairman. Okay, I have a motion to approve the easement agreement and right-of-entry between Alan Packer and Patricia De Palma of Taos County. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, clerk Colerole.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Yes. Commissioner Blakenhart.
Yes.
Vice Chair Agers.
Yes.
Chairman Lebron.
Yes. Item C is discussion, consideration, and decision regarding approval of easement agreement and right-of-entry between Francois I Ferguson and Nancy A Call. This was covered in the previous discussion, Mr. Hameen?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion to approve the easement agreement and right-of-entry between Francois I Ferguson and Nancy A Call of Taos County. Do I hear a second?
Second.
And a second. Clerk Colerole.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Yes. Commissioner Blakenhart.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gris.
Yes.
Chairman Lebron.
Yes. And finally, our item D is approval of agreement between Taos County and Village Questo for Use of Senior Center. Commissioner, specific questions for Ms. Baker?
No, just.
Some background.
A little stuff on ours? Yeah.
Commissioner O'Donnell, this is actually a situation where the county is leasing from the village for a nominal amount to provide facility for seniors. And I don't have any specific questions on the item, I'm confusing, seem like we were leasing to the village, but it's the reverse, it's their building that they seem to want.
So it's the county that owns the real?
No, the village owns, the county's, the county senior program leases that for seniors.
And you know, Commissioner, if you've ever been there, that road is very difficult for the seniors to get up to in the wintertime. The intersection where they come out is kind of a dangerous intersection, just from my experience being up there. Certainly in the future, we may want to consider looking at some other safer means for the seniors to have that ability up there.
So what is the, is it in the municipality or something?
Yes, it's right at the bottom of the hill basically. But if you go to the top of it, it's pretty.
You notice, do you know the hardware it is?
Yeah.
It's up on the very top of that hill. I would, I would conduct to entertain any, any visits that the commission would like to, to that area and for future proposals, we're going to be entertaining down a new site towards senior.
I think somewhere near the youth and families there because you've got the kitchen in there already and stuff like that, even adding on to that may not be the, if that's your good decision. That's, that's the place it needs to be, safer. All right, do I hear a motion?
So, Mr. Chairman.
Second. I have a motion to approve the agreement between Taos County, Village Questo for Use of the Senior Center, and second by Commissioner O'Donnell, clerk Colerole.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Yes. Commissioner Blakenhart.
Yes.
Vice Chair Agers. Chairman Lebron.
Yes. All right, thank you, Commissioners. Moving on to item 11, which is county manager reported matters, this is an update to the commission on various items, backed in Taos County by Mr. Leandro Corleone. Station eight for current concerns.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, biggest topic I would want to discuss today is the N911 JPA. We've had a lot of discussions with the JPA board back and forth. Ms. Robinson, legal has really been helpful in drafting what the county feels is a good agreement. And we've sent that over to the town, we're working with the two biggest partners first, the JPA board themselves, with their input. The one thing that we seem to have a bit of a major disagreement on, and that's why I wanted to talk to our board of county commissioners today, is on the composition of the JPA board. Currently, we have a board composed of our county sheriff, our county fire chief, our county EMS director, the town of Taos police chief, the town of Taos fire chief, Questa police chief, Taos ski valley police chief, and the Taos pueblo police chief. The proposal from the town of Taos is to have a board that is basically the same board, it's composed of the same individuals, however, only one vote per entity that's on the board. So the way they see it now is that Taos County has three votes, the town has two votes, and all the other entities have one. At first, it was hard for me to concede that. It's essential, I feel, for the county, all end-users of the dispatch services to at least be represented. And so that means the sheriff should have some discussion in what it means to his end-users. I think obviously fire chief needs to be able to represent his volunteer chiefs and all the volunteers out there, and EMS is a major user as well. All of them should have a voice. So if we're going to concede to one vote per entity, the big question has been, and I'll tell you on my side, I don't know if the elected official, the sheriff, is the true voice for the county. And so if the board allows us to go forward with one vote per entity, I'm going to ask that the board, let the manager make the decision who that vote will be and who our alternative be. And in this case, at this time, if the makeup is, I would recommend that our fire chief, Mike Corleone, be our vote and our EMS director be our alternative with the sheriff not having voted this time or obviously having the ability to give any input at any time as a end-user. It does seem from the other members of the JPA that they like the idea of one vote per entity. So it's been a difficult discussion back and forth right now. It's kind of the county alone wanting to be, wanting to have more representation. And so that's one of the big things I bring to the board and I'm going to stand for any questions you might have or any thoughts you have on this time.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Mr. Chairman, I think, well, my big beef is, in the past, if we look at what the past has been for N911, it hasn't been good when it was under the, pretty much the control of the town of Taos. In fact, people have died because of the lack of how those services were built. And so I have fought, I mean, hard and a lot of these commissioners have seen, you know, previous years before they came on board, to be able to keep it, bring it to the control of Taos County so that we could upgrade those services and to be able to provide the absolute best for constituents in Taos County as well as people who visit Taos County. And that's all I care for, you know, I don't want you to give the farm away. I will hold it against you for the rest of your, your time at Taos County.
Understood. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, let me make sure I let the board know that we are going to be fiscal agent. Discussions in the past was to try and create an independent body all of its own, that is impractical. And so the rest of the JPA board has agreed that Taos County will remain fiscal agent. And what that means is, and Ms. Robinson's done a good job of capturing that we are in charge of all personnel, personnel decisions, the budget at the end of the day will be vetted out with the finance subcommittee, but it's still a decision of the full board at the end of it all to be approving the budget. So the, the control, so to speak, still is within the county's hands, it really is. What this JPA board is going to chime in on is going to be ideas on how to train our staff. They might give some input on job descriptions and how to be able to create movement from trainee to a specialist one as they go up and have more experience. That's something that we would like their input on is training, making sure that we're providing the best of the training and equipment needs as we go forward. As things start to retire out, the JPA board will have a lot of input into what are we going to replace this radio with as it comes time for that. They're also very important to communication issues. If we're having problems up in San Antonio mountain or Pico Lees mountain, we want their input on that. I think it's important that they have that ability to talk to the rest of us. But in terms of hiring and firing, that's the county. In terms of disciplinary action, that's the county. So we do still have that control. Any revenue coming in, is the county controlling that revenue? Any expenditures going out, is the county putting those expenditures out? So I understand your concern and I think we've covered that by making sure that we're the fiscal agent and we've really looked more at a Santa Fe County model because that's how we, in Santa Fe County, they do have a regional dispatch, but Santa Fe County is the fiscal agent. And the rules for the county are as enforced at the dispatch center. So I just wanted to make that clear, I do understand your concerns.
I want, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Susan, our attorney, if you have any thoughts with this so far.
No, actually, Quayle Robinson has been working on this. I could have her give you a call, maybe have a private discussion.
Commissioner Blakenhart. Maybe Chairman, that was my concern, was the fiscal agency. And to me, keeping that with the county was critical. So I'm comfortable with, I'm comfortable with the one vote per entity as long as we remain a fiscal agent.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'm working, no, this will still come back for the board for final approval of this JPA, I just wanted to get some input before we take that next step so that we can save some time. I don't want to put something out there that this board's having a need agreeable to and waste a month of our time as we're going back and forth. Let me go back to the fiscal agency, it is very well spelled out under Article III in terms of financial participation. And we even get a little more detail when we break down worst-case scenario, what the percentages would be if we needed to go back to the partners for say something like litigation or shortfall in GRT of some sort. And that breakdown is basically both the county and the town of Taos at 35%, with the village, ski valley, and pueblo at 10%. And so, you know, that may be something that the village, ski valley, and pueblo might come back on with some concerns about their community being too high. Right now, that's how it's spelled out. So it's even clear that if there's a shortfall or there's extra requirements for funding in the future, it's already determined, so we're not fighting about it at that time as to who's completely responsible. So it's also clear on capital contributions of all parties, and it's also clear ongoing capital and reserving capital funds. We did also ask to make our reserve go from a $150,000 to a $300,000 required reserve. And I think that's important as we go forward to maintain a level of funding for replacement of capital cards.
And maintenance of repairs and so. And Commissioner, you guys gave it a good home and it will remain in a good one.
It was a long flight.
And it'll remain in a good one.
The previous mayor and council and Kipars, the elect, Coop, and everyone else.
So it's in a good place now, it's working really well.
Those were good choices.
Working really well. Vice Chair Agers.
Chair, I might have missed that, how many, everybody votes, everybody gets one vote?
That's the proposal from the town and that's what's been supported by the other smaller players.
The board stays the same, we just, we get one vote?
Yes. We would just, one vote per entity on major decisions that include capital infrastructure for the future, training plans and proposals, but nothing that would determine how to hire and fire staff, nothing that's going to be a final determination on budget. They certainly will have their input on their needs. The finance subcommittee would really spell out the parameters for them, but the final budget is still coming for this point.
And Commissioners, I, I all along insisted that we keep an elected official as our representative because that ensigns to the law.
And Ms. Robinson.
My choice, Mike and, and Mike here.
So keeping it probably one vote for each entity is four votes?
Five.
Five. So it's Quest, it's Quest, the Taos, the Valley, Taos, the pueblo, town of Taos, Taos County?
Yes, for now, until we get to our next topic about the Lujan River. But I wanted to get through this on the voting first and make sure that this board is okay if I go forward with the idea of one vote per entity. And that I, as an county manager, am new to designate that vote.
Mr. Court, I'm sorry to interrupt, but Quayle Robinson, Ms. here, she's been talking on the agreement. So if you have any specific legal questions, you could ask her. Mr. Court, this is.
Thank you. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, that phone call, the clear was your replacement, maybe she can explain to you her thoughts on, on the entire contract.
I'm sorry, not familiar with.
So Kate, your question is about our fiscal agency and how, what criteria would have asked this to be?
Good morning, Commissioner, starters on the phone with my name, we're a little discombobulated. But my understanding is our role as fiscal agent is that we be providing two things. One would be a financial hub for the money and two would be staff to run the organization. And so we would retain control exclusively of our own personnel. The board would be able to make recommendations to Leonro about individual employee performance, but more execution of the agreement as we know that currently our OEM, not our OEM director, Dominic, our N911 director serves sort of in two jobs. One is part of the JPA and then is day-to-day duties. Any input that the JPA board would have would be limited only to the duties under the JPA. They wouldn't be managing the day-to-day employment of Taos County employees, nor would they be in the company.
What about the physical plant, operation, physical operations?
That's ours. We still own the building, we own the space, and all of the equipment is that of the JPA. What we purchased three years ago is still ours. Taos County owns Motorola councils, everything that we invested, 1.3 million. Taos County owns Motorola councils, everything that we invested one-point-three million into at that time. Everything else is, the JPA as a whole that owns, like the computer sites and, you know, the radios up on the computer sites and things like that.
Are we gonna ever get, we didn't wish for any of that?
Well, with the new funding mechanism and the GRT tax, we won't be paying out of our funds for it. It'll be coming out of that specific funding source. And that's why we also ask for an increase in the reserves to have the ability to make decisions on the fly in a major catastrophe event.
The repeaters, how many is there?
Uh.
Seven.
Seven, yes, there's seven total. Right now, we probably are operating as well as we've ever been in the county. It's not perfect. There's still problems. We still have things go down here and there. However, we address them. Dominic and Bobby Lucero were up on San Antonio Mountain last Thursday to look at a problem. Dominic has become familiar enough with the repeater sites and we're taking care of a lot of things in-house without having to call very expensive contractors. He's been made into kind of trouble.
About five grand on that one trip that he and Bobby did years off work.
So, I mean, one more thing that the town actually, and this was a surprise to me, but that they came back and added in was they want the county to receive an administrative fee. That wasn't something we had put in originally, but they're asking us to take a five percent administrative fee, up to five percent. And so, you know, I'm open to that. I'm not gonna say no money. I think the reason we had avoided that in the past was when we took over this program three years ago, we were starved for cash. We weren't sure how we were gonna make payroll. And so it didn't seem to be a wise decision ask for rent or to ask for fiscal agent for all these other things that we needed the money for just to pay our staff. But here we are with a refunding source, that source should be sufficient to cover all our costs and I think I am open to a five percent admin fee for us to be able to cover your costs.
I'm surprised you didn't catch that before it came up.
Well, like I said, I was in, I made comments in the past about other entities and their admin fees and, you know, I think we're all here to serve the taxpayer and it doesn't always, if the money's tight, makes sense to charge one entity for another entity to just move money around. But in this case, we have put a lot of time and effort into it and then we'll accept that admin fee for the county. And the other major difference, those are the major differences. There was a few minor tweaks of language, nothing that we were majorly opposed to. So the big question is based on the votes and I just, I don't know, I'm not really asking for a choice or a decision right now, I'm just gonna let you know that that will be the direction I'll continue to move forward on is one vote per entity.
Possibly if you have any other comments or considerations, it would be appropriate if you need Commissioner Corrigan privately and let's speak on the county's behalf.
So moving on to the next topic of discussion regarding JPA 911 is the potential inclusion of Red River. The village of Red River has their own 911 PSAP up there in Red River. They are what the DFA considers a PSAP. They are recognized as that. They do receive DFA grant money, however, they've never been a part of our JPA. As the new GRT's flowing, they have some feeling that they should be able to receive the money that's generated within their community to put into their dispatch and PSAP center. We haven't decided exactly what that amount is, but it's probably somewhere between fifty and seventy thousand dollars a year based on the three-sixteens within their one mile, square mile taxi district. They, being part of the JPA would be good as a whole for the Taos County in my mind because so we would all be on the same page. Red River does not anticipate shutting down their PSAP anytime soon, nor do they want to. They feel that that is a staple of their community, it's essential to their community. And in our geographical area with the terrain that we have, the topographical issues, they have served and it will continue to serve as a backup for our PSAP here. I mentioned that we had a ballon last week at San Antonio Mountain. They were serving as our backup while that repeater was down for those few days. We have supported them in the past with backup equipment for their repeater. We've given them, I think it was battery packs and so that they were able to stay up in case they lose power. That's been an investment Taos County's made for them. We do use them. They do give us some support, they do give us backup. What was brought up in the JPA meeting was a request of a little bit more participation from them if they were able to come in and be a member of the JPA. We would like them to report to the whole board on their activities. We'd like to know what equipment needs they have and how they're addressing them. Those are, I think, are fair requests and things that'll just make us stronger in terms of public safety and communications. The concern that some of the other members brought up, maybe more specifically the town, is the idea of money flowing directly to Red River and allowing them to then have a vote on how the rest of the funding is allocated. So that's a concern that is a valid concern and good question that's come up. There's still a few things that need to be worked out and there will still need to be some logistical challenges to overcome, but the full JPA board did vote to move forward in exploring and inviting Red River to become a part of the JPA. And so I wanted to bring that to this full board, that you know that, get any thoughts you have, that you think about that. It's not obviously an incentive for a decision to take, but it will be at some point if we come back before you see how the county commission feels about including the village.
And we've met with Mr. General Ryan on there, Calhoun, on a couple of different occasions to, to talk about this stuff. I certainly support Red River staying in the, I will always support that.
So once again, Commissioners, if you have any major questions or concerns, you can address me individually anytime after the meeting or if you have anything now that you wanna try and, I can try and answer, I will. But I just, I wanted you to be informed of these discussions at that level.
So get a hold of him and Commissioner Black.
So you support, Chairman, you support, Chairman and Leandro support keeping Red River in the mix because it's useful to have that extra PSAP?
Yes.
And then if they are a member, a voting entity, then they get their pro-rated share of the tax?
I support their remaining part of our communications plan throughout Taos County. The other, the votes, I mean, that's, I give to the board and the other people that have been working on this. I've looked into that aspect.
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Black, you want to back up a little bit? The discussions that been had with DFA and Santa Fe, local government division, and they've also reached out to tax and they have, basically, at the end of the day, they say because they are considered a PSAP in the eyes of DFA, the decision's really the county commissions as to how that money will flow. My request was that they become a member of the JPA and that the JPA board brings them in if we're gonna flow that money to them. It seems appropriate that, that if the money's going to them, they're part of the group and that we do get communication back and forth with them as a part of the group. Those are my thoughts as the management. There's obviously some concern from the smaller players, you know, there was a question as to how that works on the vote and that still hasn't been worked out. And we haven't ironed out whether they will have a vote as an additional PSAP. In the long term, for the long ten, fifteen year, you never know what could happen up there. Right now, they don't wanna have anything, they don't wanna shut it down, they don't have any plans to shut that down. But if in ten years, something changes, they're already part of our group and if that needs to be shut down at that time, we're ready to step in and dispatch for them. We're ready to be able to help them out in that aspect. So until we have perfect communications in our county, there's still use for that center in Red River. And, you know, I don't know if we'll ever have perfect communications. We have beautiful mountains, that doesn't make for good connectivity.
Thank you. Okay? Thank you.
Right, so moving on to a couple other items, I wanted to tell the board, you know, as last, last week, as you know, we did have a lot of rain, we had a lot of moisture. There was some flooding concerns, but for the most part, I really, really wanna thank our OEM, Bobby Lucero, our coordinator, Mark Martega, Dominic Martinez at dispatch, and definitely our public works superintendent, Rocco Pacheco, and all of the awesome staff at public works. I think the few problems we had would have been much worse if they hadn't been so proactive. A lot of things that they dealt with, they dealt with on their own or based on just minimal concerns versus the onslaught of, of, of calls. I know that each of you did get some calls as well individually. I appreciate you bringing those to my attention and we did our best to address them as soon as possible. But all in all, it could have been much worse. And I just wanted to thank our staff to really being proactive and, and understanding that it was coming and they're still preparing, it's not over yet, there's still some concern with runoff and the snowpack that's up there. So we love the moisture, but we are always concerned about flooding. So in the future, continue to get me any of your concerns or Bobby Lucero directly as OEM and he was doing a great job coordinating everybody else to address these. I wanted to tell you that I had another meeting with Ms. Melissa Larson in regards to her request for a flea market in our county lots. We had asked her to consider the idea of utilizing the third lot in the back here for public safety concerns in the front lot. Having a jail here is a major public safety concern for us and not, making sure that we have access in and out at all times and that we're not kinda stopping on that.
Not to mention the RTB.
And yes, as well as the RTB and the fact that we do have regular scheduled bus traffic through the weekends. So after the discussion back and forth, Melissa did come back to talk to me about the idea of the third lot. So we are gonna work on it. It looks like we've chosen a two weekends in July where we'll do a little trial run and the lease is gonna have some requirements that they're gonna have to fill. So we're gonna get them a sample lease and make sure they can meet those requirements. They're also gonna be responsible for porta potties and a couple minimal things, but we all agree that a trial run at this time is probably the best approach to see if it'll work for them and if it really works for the county. So I just wanted to inform the board on that, that probably in July, you may see a small market in the back third lot.
Commissioner. Commissioner O'Leary, what about the farmer's market?
At this time, the farmer's market is more interested in the long term. They aren't, they don't see the ability to do a short-term or two-week or three-week trial. They feel they need the ability of a long-term, a full summer where they're advertising, mobilization, and just to make sure that their vendors know, you know, that they have some consistency. So this year, it doesn't look like the farmer's market's gonna be able to set up, but this trial with the flea market gives us at the county the ability to see the logistical challenges and see how we can maybe look at the farmer's market in the future. The farmers also did not appreciate the idea of their lot. They definitely felt it was all or nothing upfront. And we're still exploring whether it would be possible at all upfront, but it would be a very small footprint if at all possible because of the concerns of public safety and the bus. So it really wouldn't meet their needs at the end of the day. So that's where we're at with the farmer's market.
So as far as Melissa Larson and her group, you don't have to post that, you don't have to look out and see bids or proposals from other individuals?
They will be paying us, so we will be receiving what we feel is about a fair market value. We're gonna charge them fifty dollars a day for the use of the lot and they're gonna be responsible for all of other costs, including the porta potties or anything else they, they feel they need to do. And it is a short-term for a two-week period. If anyone else came with a request, we would offer them the same terms if, you know, it was, if they were open to the short-term this summer. And this all gives us the ability, like I said, to determine whether it's something we can, we can fund for next year for a longer-term market.
So, Mr. Chairman, as far as council is concerned, is that the best way to go with it?
Oh, I'm sorry, as far as the legality of.
Yeah.
I think when we were looking and exploring the front lot, the issues, the main issue that came up was the detention center and safety issues around having a detention center and a lot of people on traffic where they might not be able to get in and out if they were in an emergency. Now, I have done specific legal research on that issue, but speaking with the director of the detention center, I think he had concerns and I think management as a group had concerns about access, the practicality of creating a flow of traffic with people loading and unloading. They were proposing, I think, ninety different vendors and the logistics of how to do it is still provide access in and out for our detention center.
But with regards to seeking proposals like with Melissa Larson, you are, you didn't seek proposals at all?
And, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Leary, we're not purchasing any, this isn't a procurement. We have the ability to lease any of our buildings for a fair market value without doing an RFP.
But you've always said that we needed DFA approval.
Over a certain amount and if we have any impact, if we're gonna give them the space for free, we would definitely need to do an RFP in that aspect and then DFA needs to be involved. If we're getting a fair market value at a small level, a hundred dollars for a two-week contract, wouldn't require any approval?
Is that when we brought forward the idea of the farmer's market, that's what you said was needed, is DFA approval, and then that's not so at this point?
And.
Even if the farmer's market wished to come in for two weeks out of the month or two weekends out of the month?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Leary, in the original conversation, it was a request that they get it for free. And so that's why at that point, we're gonna give it to them as in kind. We needed to do an RFP to figure out what they were gonna give us. You know, it has to be a relationship in that aspect where we're getting something for our space.
Fifty dollars on a pop isn't much.
It isn't much. And we would ask for more. It wasn't a more premium location, but the third lot isn't ideal to them in the sense that it's not frontage on the road. And so, you know, we did meet kind of in the middle with a smaller amount. They also would be willing to pay a little bit more if this works on the trial run for a long time period. And that's probably what we would ask from the farmer's market, if they wanted to come, is if they would be willing for a dedicated space for a long period, you would ask for a little bit more consideration.
Well, Leandro, and Susan, just so that you know, you weren't here, but you haven't been here until just recently, but, you know, we've, I've wanted to see the farmer's market come to Taos County to, to offer an alternative to those who don't wish to do business on the plaza on weekends. It's created a lot of imbalance on the plaza as well. I don't mean for Taos County to compete with the town of Taos. Certainly, it would bring in a different group of people if, if we were to open up to the farmer's market. And we've had that discussion, you know, for three, four years now, starting with Steven Chalit. In the meantime, there are people that still want to come to Taos County and are probably losing business. It hurts economic development. And so I would like to see that happen, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Leary, this is not the ideal location for that. We have a jail with eighty beds in there that has been toward the capacity lately. It's just not the ideal location. And we can isolate a few spots, like I said, it's gonna be a very small footprint. And the farmer's market folks were not open to any alternatives of the back lot or anywhere else. They just were not open to those like.
Mr. Chairman, I, I feel that that's why when this product, this complex was created, there are, there's a driveway that goes to the jail that should probably be closed if there was a farmer's market in front. That way, there would be only access from this side for farmer's market. If that was the case, then we wouldn't use the parking lot during normal working hours during the week.
It's a different dynamic, but they're proposing requires them to park in other places and have a lot of pedestrian traffic. There won't be any additional parking available if you're setting a boost in the area where the parking is. So then you have what we have a concern about with buses. If you have a lot of pedestrian traffic with buses coming, we gotta keep that open as well and that is important for. There's also the concern that, you know, we're always begging inmates out, detainees get out on weekends. They get out and they have, they're waiting for the blue bus to find a ride home or whatever, you know, they're gonna be interacting with the same folks that are gonna be shopping at our, our market. So it isn't, it isn't the ideal location. It just has a lot of complications and there are a lot of concerns, imagine a lot of liability concerns, major liability.
But, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll say something else, is the farmer's market started right next to the jail a few years ago before we moved to the town and reported that for you. I'll leave it at that for now.
Anything else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I also wanted to give a pick-up there on NMC conference. We met yesterday with NMC staff again. Things are moving well. They, as a staff, are very excited and they're very pleased with the progress that we've shown. I wanna thank Chairman Corrigan for really working hard with our staff to secure the country club. It's gonna be a great event, I think that they're excited about the venue. We are moving forward and. We are moving forward in securing that. But one thing I do need to mention, and unfortunately, we weren't able to get it on the meeting today for final approval of the contract. But the amount that will be required to secure the country club for the event is over my signing authority. It's at a $38,720 contract right now. We do need to get a PO placed to secure the dates. And so on June 6th, the official contract will be before the board for approval. But I do want to let the board know I'm going to allow staff to issue a PO to secure the dates. I don't want to lose the dates. It's too close to at this point to find somewhere else. And so we're still soliciting donations. We're still, and they're starting to come in. I want to thank Commissioner Gallegos. I understand he secured 700 Taus Energy bars for our gift bags, so things like that. I want to thank the mayor, who has been, ladies have the idea of doing branding of little discs with discs. And so Mr. Mayor, in his hat, has on jeans, is going to donate, it sounds like he's going to donate. We've offered to pay. He hasn't told us how much, just shakes his head. So he's been giving us these discs. We're going to brand our Taus County logo into it. That would be one of our big plays as well, so people could take back, you know, a kind of cool momentum from a conference. And. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, what event is going to be at the country club?
Our event, our host night, the county is hosting night, which is on Wednesday. We're going to host our event at the country club.
We solicited bids, Commissioner, from the Solar Center, Monte Sagrado, the, what's that place out there? Cape Town, yeah, Cape Town and the country club. The country club came back the most accommodating and the cheapest.
So we'll be, Mr. Chairman, will we be able to fit all, what is it?
They're renting a tent that capacity is 650 and there'll be tables, chairs, it'll be buffet. Anisa, shine in any time. She's really got a nice event planned.
Yeah, the reason we went with them mainly is that they were going to accommodate us in both the, them getting all the stuff that we needed and we would not have to be the person getting the tents and the food and everything going to a certain place because Taus doesn't really have that. So that's why we went with the country club. They were not the lowest, but Cape Town was that they cannot accommodate our sponsors. Cannot put any of our sponsors up on their stuff, especially if we have a competing vendor to them. Cannot, and also they were going to charge us also if we went over on time, it would start charging us by the half hour. So we couldn't do those.
Mr. Chairman, why don't we have a special meeting to approve this?
As soon as possible, yes, or wait until the 6th, I agree. Because there's a deposit that needs to be given. He basically has to pay for the tent before the.
Yeah, so the tent people are the ones that are requesting the deposit now. So then with him being the contact, he has to give them the 30%.
I think it's 10%.
10% of it upfront, so we have the date saved and the big tent.
So if you set up a special meeting for that, I think that would be.
We can do that then. Any suggestions on the date next Tuesday? Next Tuesday, when we're originally going to do our budget?
I have a more out late Tuesday.
Monday, we need at least our notice, otherwise we could even try for Friday.
Yeah, I'll call in.
If we had put it on the agenda today, I'm sorry, we would have been able to get that down, but we will have to bring it back for approval because of the $38,000 price tag.
June 6th isn't soon enough?
I feel if we can, if you'll allow me to do the purchase order first.
But, well, Mr. Chairman, if there's no contract and you're putting together a purchase order, is it probably active? Well, there's a contract. They submitted their contract to us, but we haven't approved it as a law.
So we'll set up a special Tuesday, if that works. I need one, one item.
What about the 25th?
Call in.
For Monday?
I'll call in.
Can we call in?
I'll come in, convene it, and you guys call in and we'll vote.
I can vote.
What's the drop date last day?
It was, it was supposed to be on this, this Friday was when I was supposed to get, well, last Friday was promised, and I was trying to get it this Friday.
What about Friday, the 19th? If we could get a very quick agenda out this afternoon, I need 22 hours.
We are all asked to be here for the Ted Avery event. We could do it five minutes before that. So for on Friday, does that work? There you go. Bingo. Can we deal with Renell's? No, we just need three. The only thing to count to three would be a successful permission. That's what Dick and Ivy said.
And we do have a contract, do we?
They've submitted their contract.
The quote and the, the big quotes is, yeah, we have.
And Mr. Chairman, do we have the buses? I'm afraid.
And Commissioner, there's no driving personal vehicles except for maybe us. All of the, what are they called? The conference attendees are required to bus. And the ones that are, like Espinellos, they're not staying here in town, driving back and forth. They'll park at the armory and they've set up buses that'll take them from the armory to the country club.
To answer your question.
There's a really unbelievable transportation plan that's.
The RTB is sending all the folks hotels, transporting back and forth from Arriban also to Taus.
According to NMC, yesterday they had 517, 530 booked at this time. We're reaching capacity in town of.
And another 61 at non Airbnb and Airbnb. The Hampton chose not to be part of the process, but they're getting people there as well.
And a lot of people are also scheduling sort of like new vacations before and after, which are encouraging. Can I do a bus pass? I think I'd like to.
I think I'm first picking you up at the scene at home.
You suggest.
You have multiple vendors for that, so you might.
I would prefer that you get picked up by the sheriff's department.
I gotta go.
Okay. That's all I have for me.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item 12, Commissioners' Report Matters, any new business that you'd like on future meetings? Here you go, at this time, if you do have something, get with Renell as soon as possible so you can start getting all this stuff. Commissioners' Announcement, as I just announced, the, we should have all got the invitation to the dedication of the Ted Avery sculpture. It'll be Friday at 4:30. We'll meet before that, so everybody that can be here certainly, and we posted it as a potential forum. And I think that's it. I may remember something else. I always forget about. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to thank the six elected officials that appointed, voted for me to the Mexico Association of Counties. I hope that through our county manager that we can continue to open the doors so that every elected official feels that they are being heard at the NMC level, including at my level as a board member, the representative of Taus County. So thank you all for the support. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Moving on to item C, this is Discussion, Consideration, and Consideration Regarding Appointment of County Commissioner to the Taus County Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. I attended the meeting this last week. I was invited by Judge McElroy. I am asking that he appoint me as our representative to the Taus County Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. I think I have a lot to offer for it. And I will, we have ex officio members, Dominic is on it. Sheriff and his staff are on it. I would be the one voice for Taus County.
A vote. Move for approval, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
I'll second that. And Mr. Chairman, can I be your alternate?
Did I lose a flip or something or?
Well, could I, don't you, we appoint, I'd like to be the alternate on that.
That's what I'm saying, did I lose a flip? Did you choose my alternate or what foot did I do wrong? I'm kidding, Commissioner, joke, but you tell me it's okay to be. Can, I guess we can.
Commissioner, place an alternative this time because it's not on the agenda, or can we?
I think one will be probably as we draft the bylaws, it will be exercised at that time to list an alternate. So I will put that on the agenda as soon as the bylaws are drafted, allowing this to do so. Okay, I have a motion in a second to appoint myself as the Commissioner to the Taus County Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. Court of law.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
And Ms. Blankenner.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Item D is Discussion, Consideration, and Approval of Mexico Association Counties Checklist for Taus County Commissioners during the Annual Inspection of Taus County Adult Detention Center and Procedures for the Annual Inspection. This will be presented by Commissioner Candace Alval.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have in your packet, the first list is the recommended checklist from NMC. And then followed by, although it should be included in this agenda item, is the procedures for the annuals inspection that are in, under report where they shouldn't be. So I'm asking that we separately approve the inspection checklist.
We can do that in form of a motion. At the time we entertain the motion, Commissioner, why don't you suggest the motion and we can do it how you.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the New Mexico Association of Counties Checklist for Annual Inspection of the Jail.
Mr. Chairman, any thoughts, you more staff?
We need a second.
I'll go in a second.
Okay, I've met with Nelson and I met with people with the multilevel. Do you remember the guy's name that does the, well, Patrick Trujillo and then the guy that does the, what's the program? No, the.
James Thomas?
No, 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 what we want to, oh, the accreditation process. And all they told me in a very stern thing is to make sure we don't vary from their forms. I talked to Commissioner O'Donnell about this. We don't vary from their set procedures or we cannot obtain accreditation. Staff has reviewed, has met with the accreditation council for his preliminary stuff, and he's in support of Commissioner O'Donnell's presentation. Do we have a motion, a second, any other?
Any other comments, Mr. Chairman, from staff or manager, attorney?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I thank Commissioner O'Donnell for taking us on. I just agree with the idea that if we want to move toward the accreditation, we should be using the documents that will be based, being judged on accreditation. So I just wanted to make sure we're consistent in that aspect.
And Chairman Commissioners, I agree with Mr. O'Donnell.
Court of law.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenner.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagis.
Yes.
Was there another thought of this item then?
Well, if you scroll down to where I'm giving a report.
That's item E, isn't it?
Yeah, well, it says inspection of Taus County Adult Detention Center. This is the procedures and that should have been included in that, like it was last time on the agenda. Well, it is. Annual inspection checklist for the annual inspection and procedures for the annual inspection. And these procedures just detail the amount of time, what the detention director does, how he reports on staffing levels, inmate population, explains how the grievance process works, overview of the disciplinary process. So each year, he gives us the description of what's going on, confirms all operating systems have been inspected and aren't working, talks about rodent control. And that operational overview should last more than 15 minutes. Then there's an operational overview provided to the Commissioners as far as the tour. So this just outlines how we toured the jail and what information is given by the detention director. And this was provided to me by the director, Mr. Beta.
Is that in his policy procedures, ma'am? Or not, it should be.
I don't believe they are.
Let's do it that way, Commissioner. If you think it fits his protocol, I think that would be appropriate. That way it's kind of second stone, that's what we're going to do. Agree?
Yeah, that's something legal, but this is kind of more for us internally of how we.
But it's a requirement by his accreditation process, and I was thinking if it's in his.
I will yield to legal.
Let's find out which is better for.
Chairman Commissioners, I would like to research the issue, but I think it's obvious that whatever is in accordance with accreditation and procedure would be the way to go.
Okay. All right. So.
Moving on to item E, a report regarding Taus County Commission 2016 Inspection to the Taus County Adult Detention Center. This will, has been provided to each of us. Any comments, Commissioners? Okay. Thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell, for taking that out. We like seeing you in jail.
Do we, I like being there. Shall we formally accept this report? I know the staff keeps saying to report back to the commission. So it's not clear as to whether we have.
Chairman Commissioners, let's clear up our next agenda, on the consent agenda. So if you do formally move to approve something, that's on the agenda. I think that's a good idea.
Perfect.
Thank you. All right, now, moving on to item 13, Taus County Board of Commissioners Making a Beaming Close Session Regarding the Following Items. Discussion Regarding Employee of Taus County Sheriff's Office. This can be discussed in closed session under the exemption of Open Meetings Act 1015-1H2. Second item is Discussion Regarding Tefoya Versus Taus County. This is also may be discussion executive session under Open Meetings Act exemption 1015-1H7. The next is Discussion Regarding Espinosa Garcia Versus Taus County. These matters also the exemption for the Open Meetings Act 1015-1H7 as well. Nichols Versus Taus County, this is allowed to be discussed in executive session under exemption in the Open Meetings Act 1015-1H7 as well. Discussion Regarding Taus County et al. Versus Carmen Rial et al. These matters may be discussed in executive session under Open Meetings Act exemption 1015-1H7. And finally, Baca Versus Taus County, that's also allowed to be discussed in executive session under Open Meetings Act exemption 1015-1H7. Do I hear a motion to, and is your recommendation at this time, Ms. Baker, of legal executive session on those six items?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I entertain a motion by the Commissioner.
So, Mr. Chairman, you have a motion? Second. And a second to go into executive session. Court of law.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenner.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagis.
Yes.
Do you want to write? I have a press this permit.
Yes.
Do you smoke this or what? I entertain a motion from the Taus County Board of Commissioners to come out of executive session.
So.
Have a motion, checking, and a second.
Court of law.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenner.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagis.
Yes.
Ms. Baker, will you verify that the commission did meet on the previously listed six items in executive session under the exemptions? Also listed. also listed on the agenda and read? And that no decisions or violations...
Yes, I will verify that we discussed the items as they were noticed in executive session. And I have listed some action items so that the board may direct staff. And that's on the agenda, number fourteen, and it's H to D.
Motion to accept Susan's report, Miss Baker's report... Of the executive session. Second. Okay, motion, a second. Court called a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenher.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagel.
Yes.
Chairman O'Donnell.
Yes. Okay, moving on to item fourteen. Is there a... Is there a motion regarding item eight, Consideration and Decision of Tefoya Versus Taus County?
Thought it might just be motions. Motion giving our chairman to sign? No?
I would ask that the board directs staff to move forward this settlement on these cases. And so, a motion directing the county manager and county attorney to engage in settlement negotiations.
And authorize...
Authorize the chairman to sign a final settlement agreement.
No, for each four items, if we did want to...
No, I'd probably submit...
Okay. So, my shared ideas.
Yes, that's the motion I was getting to. I'll go back to the... I like for you to do it better, so.
Okay, I have a motion on item eight, Tefoya Versus Taus County, to authorize the manager and legal staff to enter into a settlement agreement and to authorize the chairman to sign if settlement is reached.
Court called a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Oh, we need a second. Yes. Motion, second, okay.
Second, but court called a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenher.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagel.
Yes.
Chairman O'Donnell.
Yes. And B is Consideration Decision Regarding Espinoza Garcia Versus Taus County. I entertain a motion to authorize staff, legal staff and management to enter into a settlement agreement and authorize the chairman to sign on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners.
Second.
That's why I have a motion.
I made that motion.
Discussion, none.
Court called a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenher.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagel.
Yes.
Chairman O'Donnell.
Yes.
Do we have a second, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, it was Gallegos, Blankenher. Item C, this consideration and decision regarding Baca Versus Taus County, I entertain a motion to authorize the manager and legal staff to enter into a settlement agreement. And if one is reached, the chairman to sign. I made that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
A motion and a second. Court called a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenher.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagel.
Yes.
Chairman O'Donnell.
Yes. And finally, on item D...
And I apologize, this motion is a little bit different. It's specifically for...